I'd like to call to order the Thursday, October 15th, 6:00 PM, Joint Meeting of the City Council Ordinance and Oversight Meeting to Order. In accordance with the Governor Charles D. Baker March 10th, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Ledger 30A and 20. The Ordinance and Oversight Committee of the City Quincy Council is meeting remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access. Madam Chair, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Kane. Counselor Kroll.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Pemucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Chairman Mahoney.
Present.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video conferencing of this public meeting, or may transmit a meeting through any medium. The tenants are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So that was just to let everybody know that this could be taped. The matter before us this evening is Council Order 2020-018, the resolve to update, an update on the economic development of the city of Quincy. And so basically, I think we have Mr. Fatsis and some of his planning board here tonight, and they're just going to go over, you know, basically anything to do with the downtown as the city's acting as the master developer. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Fatsis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce our participants this evening. Rob Stevens, Deputy Planning Director. Sean Glennon, the Director of Community Development. Maureen Gary, who is the Director of Business and Government Relations. Jim Scribby, Economic Development and Business Relationship Planner. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. You know, tonight, we hope to comprehensively review our objectives, implementation, and status of our efforts as outlined in the, in the order. I think I'd like to start a little preamble. Economic development, of course, is a living, flexible, changing mission. The playing field is ever-changing because the bulk of it is controlled by private real estate owners and investors who have chosen to do business in Quincy. Our goal is to support and collaborate with these investors and produce viable business that benefits our citizens and recruit new business and investments to our city. We're often asked why a particular venue, product, or service is not selecting to have a presence in our city. The reasons vary, but ultimately, government does not dictate private marketplaces. We certainly work to influence these private investment decisions by organizing assistance and resources to help businesses to locate, grow, and thrive in our community. As I said, our PCD team utilizes all of our staff to encourage economic growth. And all staff participates in economic development initiatives. As I mentioned, I've introduced the team that's presenting tonight, but I'd like to give you a sense that beyond this, different things that we do that are important to us and we feel is an example, just a couple of quick examples of how other members of our staff participate. We are, we are fortunate to have the opportunity to present this year at the New England APA. They have quite a few folks that want to present. And fortunately for us, the city of Quincy and the town of Arlington were selected to participate because they felt that our responsive and flexible manner in which we reformed, or excuse me, reacted to small business in the wake of COVID-19. So Elizabeth Manning, Liz Manning, our Senior Principal Planner, and Neil McColl have been asked to give a presentation for the entire New England, Southern New England group. And interestingly enough, the topic is hustling for small business during a pandemic, advancing small business recovery through municipal and regional support. That's one type of thing that we do. We also are fortunate to participate in different other venues. This Monday, we will be working in our own PCD event that will be sponsored through the Chambers platform. Pond will be the moderator. And again, what we'll be talking about in that case is digital marketing strategies to reach your best customer. Again, all of our staff participate at some level. And what I'm going to talk about tonight will be very, very clear that we, we, we cover a lot of, a lot in this process. Couple of other points. For the past two years, we've been funding Quincy College to provide a home health aid course in which more than 50% of the students are low-mart income. Students that pass HHA certification are then guaranteed employment by Best of Care, which is also located in Quincy, which is an HHA place. Liz Manning's our in-house contact on that. We also provided a $50,000 CDBG allocation to the Quincy Economic Development Corporation, QEDC, which is the economic development arm of the Quincy Chamber Commerce to offer a technical assistance program to microenterprises in the city of Quincy. And then finally, we also have developed a small business plan in partnership with MAPC. And that, the cost of that study and plan was paid for by CDBG. So Sean and Maureen presented at the Chambers Virtual Town Hall last month on that very plan. So it's important, again, CDBG, the planning efforts here, and of course, Maureen and Jim, who serve as our Director of Business and Government Relations and Economic Development and Business Relationship. They are, they are primarily involved in that. Of course, my deputy, Rob Stevens, who does it all. So our mission is placing a spotlight on the people and communities who are investing back into Quincy and the neighborhoods of Quincy. We like to serve as a resource to support and assist local businesses to grow and thrive in the community. Thus, we collaborate with developers, real estate brokers, to assist with identifying suitable retail office and industrial space. We provide assistance with permitting and licensing departments, and we serve as a coordinating point of contact for all government departments within the city, including, of course, the Inspection Services Department that are involved every step of the way in opening and helping new businesses thrive in our city. We also collaborate with state and federal agencies. Probably the most important would be the Mass Office of Business Development. Secretary Mike Canely, every week has a call that he shares with all planning and community development groups across the Commonwealth. The conversations are up to date. As I said, they're weekly, they're Friday afternoon. And, you know, they cover everything from what's going on nationally, what's going on in the state. Obviously, at this time, we're spending a lot of time speaking about COVID. You know, we get right down into the weeds when we talk about, you know, what other communities are experiencing, positive and negative. We had a nice conversation about what heaters inside tents can do and how they can be a problem. But as you know, many, many restaurants, many, many businesses are forced to go outside to continue and be viable. So I, I'd say that that is an incredibly important part of what we do is keeping track with what else is going on in the state. Obviously, we work closely with Mass Development Finance Agency. Later on, you may hear that is MOBD. Mass Small Business Administration, the SBA. The Service Corps of Retired Executives, which is SCORE. Small Business Development Corp., SBDC. And Mass Growth Capital, or MGC. We partner with the Quincy and South Shore Chamber Commerce on local and south of Boston events and marketing opportunities. We collaborate with our local colleges as well. Quincy College, Eastern Nazarene College. We have a, as many of you are aware and those at home, we had a UMass Dartmouth Quincy Center assessment done. That is available on our planning website. And I ask anybody that is interested in what's going on in Quincy Center to take a read. It's a spectacular piece of work. We also have done field study with Harvard University, Boston University, and UMass Boston. This is where they have students come to us, work with the planning department, talk about intermodal transportation. Basically, they focused, Harvard focused on our tea stations and what they need to the economic vital, vitality of the city. We partner with local banks and other institutions. Examples being Enterize, which is a mini MBA program, which assists small business owners to create their own three-year growth plan. Bank of Canton provided substantial mailing to business communities. We partnered with the Chamber and Tim Cahill, and we presented this program to the council in January of 2020. Another example is the Mountain One Bank grant to Quincy College for the internship program. Small business owners reap the benefit of interns moving into full-time positions like Intellicare here in Quincy. I've reached out to some of our local realtors and commercial realtors especially to kind of bring you up to date on current trends. And again, these trends are now. They, in some cases, speak to prior to the pandemic. But I want to really highlight Sean Canely's incredible help in giving us some of this retail information. So I'll start with the retail overview in Quincy Center, but also throughout the entire city. Typical Quincy retail commitments are a five-to-10-year lease with two five-year options. That is the norm. Currently, during COVID, we're seeing more one-to-two-year, if you will, lease programs or discounted programs where some landlords are offering and accepting 65% rent, 50 cents on the dollar, you know, at the point of sale. And there's a reason that this is important. Many of these small businesses have accepted the payroll protection plan, so they have to stay open. And that's a very important piece of this. It's also been reported that some businesses in the city have given June and July forgiveness. But, you know, the reckoning is coming. I think a lot of what we're seeing is that grocery space is thriving. We couldn't hear better news from Stop &amp; Shop and the other grocers and stores that sell food because a lot of people are eating much more at home. But restaurants and gyms aren't faring as well, although there's been a very, very strong effort in the city to keep people going to restaurants. Maybe not as much to go to gyms. That's, that's a personal problem I just wanted to share. Dry cleaners, for instance, are down 50 to 60% in the city. Food service in President's Place has dropped down about 60%. Nero Cafe, which we all heard was going to go into the building that houses the Chamber, obviously. They backed out, and their reason was due to COVID. They were not able to proceed with the plan that they had given us because COVID started to have an effect. It's important to note one thing that comes from BU, Professor Rob Hanigan. 25% of all restaurants in Massachusetts have closed. There's an article that I'll share when I pass out my notes after this meeting. And in Quincy, we have approximately 300 restaurants. We certainly haven't lost 75 of them. There's a reason for that. And the reason is we have taken a major effort to really work and help the restaurant industry. The council has been incredibly important. As you know, the city has a restaurant guide that literally lists on six pages all the restaurants in Quincy that are open for takeout, delivery, indoor and outdoor dining. And that has been updated as recently as 9/24. So it's an important piece that our citizens have been able to utilize to know who's open, who's not open, if they're offering delivery service, indoor dining, or outdoor dining. So this is a big piece of what we're doing, and I think we've made quite an impact on the city's restaurant scene. I'm going to touch on, before I get back to restaurants and talk about some other overviews, I'd like to give you the commercial office overview right now in the city. Commercial office space is 90%, 94% occupied. And when I say occupied, that means they're paying their rent. They have a 98% collection rate. It is only down 1% from what the lowest collection rate was, excuse me, the highest was, was 99%. 35% of our offices are physically occupied. They're doing a lot of remote working, obviously. I'll use Stop &amp; Shop as an example. Stop &amp; Shop is the add 200 employees to the city of Quincy in Quincy Center. But only 20% of their office space is occupied right now. And, you know, they actually purchased a condo in the SAR building to house the 200 new employees who were brought to Quincy Center. You know, when we talk about what's happening as far as the, you know, commercial office space in the city, we've been very fortunate to have a solid commercial office space seen. But again, as you know, with our large businesses, they have started to ask, not started to, they've continued to ask their businesses to work at home. We'll find out as we go along. We're still in a place where what was said to me is that we are modeling, and what businesses have been modeling with across Commonwealth, is we were all kind of planning that we'd be back in business by September of this year. That was then revised to January of this year, of next year. And right now, what is being discussed and what is being said in the trades is we can look for a recovery at some point in June. So we're talking June 2021. What does that mean? That means that we certainly can't accurately anticipate when folks are going to come back to a full, thriving business community. I think that has a lot to do with when there is a vaccine, if there is a vaccine, and how well we are as a, as a Commonwealth to produce and to distribute that vaccine. When we talk about, you know, what's available, I asked a few retail players that everybody's very familiar with with two high-profile businesses in Quincy Center. Said, "How is your retail component?" I asked the Galvin folks. They have 3,500 square feet of retail in negotiations, and they're pretty sure they have someone to come in. They still have 1,500 available. Chestnut Place, they have, which is the new 15-story building for anybody at home that is not familiar with that name, has a 2,500-square-foot lease to Harbor One Bank, which just cut its ribbon last week. I've got a lesson on ATMs are now becoming ITMs, which are interactive kiosks, and they have one right up in front of their building. They have 1,600 square feet available. But that is just a comment on two brand-new buildings in the city of Quincy, so to speak, and what's going on there. For just a second, I want to touch on industrial space in the city. Industrial space in the city is 92% leased. There's not a ton of industrial in the city. And I don't want to throw anybody off, but a real bright spot is down at the shipyard. Dan Quirk is building a 41,000-square-foot office building on spec down there. His view is that he'll, he's happy to put office in there. He's also working the, you know, the potential for lab space or other use. But that's quite a move on his part to build that building on spec. He also has renovated 24,000 feet of office space and has one building that is 12,000 square feet of office space and is connected to 12,000 square feet of warehouse space. And he has also just leased at the shipyard 34,000 square foot space to ABC Building Supply, which is a nationally recognized building supply company. So that's going on in our industrial zone. What I'd like to do right now is go back. As we all know, this started with us, and the council asked us to put together this report in January of this year. So of course, we started and did quite a bit of work to prepare for a presentation. And I'd like to ask Maureen Gary if she would step in and kind of speak to the business environment pre-COVID and give you a snapshot of what was going on, what information we had gathered up through March of the year. So with that, Maureen, if you would mind coming in.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. As Jim had mentioned in response to the council order back in January, our economic development team created a presentation which was pretty much an overview of a lot of the work we've done over the past couple of years and what the business environment looked like in the city of Quincy. Unfortunately, things have changed considerably, and some of that information could be outdated and just not relevant at this point. But I just want to give you a kind of a snapshot of the pre-COVID, what we call pre-COVID business community or business environment. And this, again, goes back to January. So at that point, we had over 4,000 active businesses in the city of Quincy, which included, which includes large and small business owners. There are over 52,000 employees working in Quincy, and 47 of these people who work in Quincy also live in Quincy. So there's a substantial amount of employees in the city of Quincy.
I think you meant 47,000.
47,000, yes. Did I cut that short? Sorry, that's a lot. Sorry about that. So 47,000 people both work and live in Quincy out of the 52,000 employees who are here in the city. Employment at that time increased by 4.5% from 2014 to 2019. Unemployment at that point for the city was 3.1%. 300-plus eating establishments throughout the city exists and hopefully will still exist. And more than 50 were of Asian flair and still growing at that time. We had 23 new restaurants open in Quincy Center alone. In 2014 to 2019, there were 50 new businesses that reopened or that opened in downtown Quincy as a result of the development projects. We've identified some of our largest. I think there are seven or eight, some of our largest employers in the city of Quincy with over 10,000 employees in total. Starting with State Street Bank, Stop &amp; Shop, Granite Telecommunications, Boston Financial, ArbeLa Insurance, Harvard Pilgrim Health, Boston Scientific, and Quincy Mutual, just to name a few of our tops. So that was, that was part of our snapshot of the business community. Following that, we, or in addition to that, we were working on a small business plan. We just wrapped that business plan up at the end of March, and we're hoping to present that to the council at that time. But obviously, things have changed. But some of the, the points that came out of the small business plan, it was a joint effort with the Community Development Department and Sean Glennon's team, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. We did a deep dive into the small business community, who they were, what they did, what their needs are. And with the COVID situation, their needs are even relevant more today than they, than they were at that point. Small businesses, we defined as businesses with less than 50 employees, microbusinesses with less than five employees. The plan, we're just going to be rolling out, so we'd like to provide you with a copy so that you can read it at your leisure. There are a lot of details in there. It's a great plan. We came up, we came up with some excellent recommendations to help address the needs of the small business community. And these recommendations, we've started to implement as of today, and we'll be implementing for the rest of 2020 and for 2021. And just to name a few of these recommendations, one of the top priorities is translation and interpretation for city services. And I know Melissa Hoare and I believe Nina Liang are working on that piece of the project. I know Jim had mentioned workshops. We are in the process of starting our first of three workshops and one-on-one business assistance. We're in the process of drafting a storefront and improvement program, which is underway. Working with the business owners, one of the top priorities for them was social media connections and consistent connections and referrals from the city of Quincy. So we're working on that piece as well. So like I said, I will provide you with a copy of the small business plan and any other details that you'd like as far as the previous presentation that we weren't able to provide to you. That's about all I have for this. I'd like to turn it back to Jim, and we'll be available for questions at any point. Thanks.
Getting back to the current and getting back to some of the things that have become very important to all of us is post-COVID resources that we've been able to bring to bear and help the citizens of Quincy. I'm going to kind of give them to you in a chronological order. The Quincy Hospitality Support Fund, which was basically a project that tried to help those people that were in that hospitality industry deal with housing and issues that, you know, immediately presented themselves because many businesses not only had to shut down, but basically, they were unable to pay their health. So through the Affordable Housing Trust, we provided a $1.125 million allocation. We got 952 applications. 847 applications were approved. Basically, 394 tenants were assisted. 366 landlords were assisted. And 311 hospitality businesses were helped by this program. And that program ran from March until June. And I'd like to just say, a very successful program. That was the first thing that we started hearing back from that we were really stepping up before everybody else was able to. And I say that's because that all came about before the CARES Act was, was established. So this really helped ground root people that were in the business, literally pay their rent and stay in their business. The next business program that everybody's pretty much very familiar with is the Small Business Grant Program that was funded with CARES money and CDBG money that was purposed, and in some cases, repurposed, to assist as many people as we could. To kind of touch off a little bit of a review, the program was launched on April 30th. Very important to note this because this was before anybody else had gotten out there. And I think there was one community that had beaten us to the punch in the entire Commonwealth. The program, you know, started with a media event with Congressman Lynch, you know, Tim Cahill, the mayor, of course, and myself. Applications were exclusively submitted online via a third-party vendor, neighborly software. I touch on this because it was the most efficient way for us to actually utilize federal standards and an application that was going to be extremely fair for people to utilize. But of course, when you use an online application, it requires a great deal of hand-holding in some cases. There were people that literally got online, and we caught them. And when I say we caught them, once they went online, we knew they had been there. And in some cases, they got frustrated and were unable to finish their applications. Every single person that registered online was reached out to by our staff. Tim Scribby probably spent many a night talking to folks in the industries and really, really was helpful touching these people. And in an amazing way, we got so- And in, in an amazing way, we got so many responses that were shocking. It wasn't huge money and, and you know, by the time the deadline, which was May 15th occurred, there were 561 applications in the system. 145 applications were withdrawn or never formally submitted by the applicant. Thus, the amended true universe of applications was 416. 377 applications were approved, 90%, 40 were denied. If they were denied, basically it was because they told us they made too much money or they didn't meet the, the requirements that were set forth in the program. You know, having a business checking account, things of that nature. Of those denied, the primary reason was that these businesses, again, were ineligible and it was not the owner's primary source of income. The total amount of grant funds that were awarded was $2,479,539. Nearly $1.1 million came from CDBG stimulus funds and the rest came from non-HID CARES Act funding. The average grant to those businesses was $6,577. Eighty-nine businesses, which is 24%, received a maximum grant of $10,000. For most of the businesses assisted, the amount of their grant will pay for three months worth of rent. That was the idea. Checks were mailed to the 376 businesses on Friday, June 5th, accompanied by an award letter from Mayor Koch. An incredibly successful program. We went back to the chamber and afterwards we said, is there anything else we can do to connect these people, to make them work with us? And they were all awarded, if they were not members of the Chamber of Commerce, a free Chamber of Commerce membership. And I tip my hat to Tim Cahill. A very, very major piece of that was his, his support in that program. Talk about recipients. Forty-one percent of those businesses were women-owned businesses. Thirty percent were minority-owned businesses. And, and again, I want to talk about, this was launched on April 30th, closed on May 15th, a significant turnaround time. One that was admired by other communities and as I told you earlier, were being asked to make a presentation to the Southern New England Planning Association, talking about exactly that. How did we turn it around as fast? And how did we get into these small businesses quickly as possible? And again, the media event that was well-publicized by the media in the city of Quincy helped us immensely. I'm going to move on to the Quincy QCAP Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, which was also funded through monies from the city, from the Affordable Housing Trust. $136,000 was distributed to 83 households for April and May rental assistance. Again, these were folks that were non-hospitality workers that came through the process and we just found a way to help them. And that was a magnificent process. Again, working very closely with Death Hand Strollo and QCAP, can't say enough about their help. Now, what has happened since then? We've, of course, temporarily expanded the outdoor dining permit program, the TEP. Fifty-five permits were issued. It was basically one-stop shopping for restaurant owners, a streamlined permit and a process with fees waived. Expedited permits, one-day turnaround. Response from business owners is, it's easier to do business in Quincy than Boston. And that's a real-life comment that came from folks that worked and had businesses in both places. The closing of Cottage Ave, you know, does it help a, a, a city like ours? Yes. We, we set up a situation that idle hours, 16C, shaking, shaking crowd, you know, they all got to participate in that street action. And there were also times when we had free music that was offered by Foxconn. And again, we're exploring potential for permanent outdoor dining and, you know, closing Cottage Ave in the future because it was so successful. And again, as you're all aware, the mayor has waived liquor license renewal fees this year to try to help these businesses continue to, to, you know, every bit we can do to help them, we want to do. The economic development planners, as we went through this process, and again, that's Jim and Maureen and with assistance from all the staff, we created a fiscal resource guide, identifying fund resources through SBA, math, growth, cash, capital, and local lending institutions. We provided constant updates and continue to, in consultation to business owners on COVID resources, reopening guidelines, and all of, all other potential resources. Ruth Jones and her team have been spectacular in helping us with these businesses. As we know, it's not going to skip our city. So businesses that have been affected by COVID, we've reached out to them through, obviously the Health Department, but also this department afterwards, and in some cases, just to make sure that we were doing everything we could, make sure that they had the equipment to reopen those businesses as quickly as they could. You know, the weekly town hall calls with Lieutenant Governor and Secretary Kenealy and the SBA during the beginning of the COVID was at least twice a week. We were all hands-on debt. We listened to every bit of information and it helped us move forward and allowed us to distribute a weekly newsletter with updates on COVID guidelines, unemployment resources, and of course, the SBA and MOBD assistance. We participated in Quincy Chamber of Commerce Town Hall Zooms, SBA Score Zooms, and Regional Economic Development Zooms, again, to stay in front of as many people as we could. We created and continued to update the restaurant guide. A big piece of what we can do to help businesses in the city and have continued to do so is something that we're all familiar with. It's called the Payroll Protection Program, PPP. Jim Scribby was our lead dog on that sled and I would like him to take a few minutes to kind of walk you through what we did and how this impacted area businesses. And with that, I'll hand it off to Jim.
Thank you, Jim. I would love to. Good evening, councilors. Sure by now you were all very familiar with the Federal Paycheck Protection Program, or commonly known as PPP. And I hope that those of you who operate a small business were able to secure adequate PPP funding back in April or May. If not, there are still a few options out there offered by the SBA, like the EIDL, Economic Injury Disaster Loan. It is expected that the EIDL will run most likely until the end of the year. And yes, you can still receive funding for both PPP and the EIDL. I want to echo the planning director's remarks about never hesitating to call our office or email us to discuss these types of conversations. We may not, we may not always have the answers at hand, but we most certainly can connect you with someone who does, or at a minimum, answer some of your high-level questions that you would like to understand prior to talking to your bank or personal accountant. Be honest, I did not realize the full impact that we were making during the months of March and April until I reflected on a call with one of our local hairdressers. She had gotten very emotional on the call with me, simply because I returned a call and gave her my cell phone number to reach back to me when she was able to talk. She had explained that she had been trying to get ahold of her bookkeeper and local bank for days now, but had heard nothing back because of the volume of calls everyone was receiving at the time. She was also trying to keep her employees on payroll because she had known about the Paycheck Protection Program, but did not know where to begin. While we do speak to a lot of businesses on a regular basis when times are good, it has been incredible, it has been an incredible failing, being a lifeline to all of our local owners during all this uncertainty. I know that is, would be only expected from an economic development team, that we would be busy during an economic crisis, but work never seemed to feel like work. Back to PPP loans. These loans held particular appeal for small business owners for one big reason. The loan is eligible for complete forgiveness, provided that 60% of the proceeds are used to cover payroll costs for eight weeks. However, the interesting and challenging at time part of this program was that it could only be administered by an SBA-approved lender. Luckily, we were fortunate enough to have had nine of our great Quincy banks operating around the clock to serve our community. I'd like to share with you some of the statistics that have come from the program to highlight the diversity of businesses that participated, participated and received funding. Quincy had two businesses that received funding between $5 and $10 million. Sixteen businesses who received funding $2 to $5 million. Twenty-one businesses received between $1 and $2 million in funding. Sixty businesses received between $350,000 and $1 million. 128 businesses received between $150,000 and $250,000. 1,200 businesses received under $150,000. Of those 1,200 businesses, the average loan amount was about $35,000, which equates to about $42 million. And if you have received funding, please research how to request forgiveness. It may be as simple as a one-pager, depending upon the amount that you received. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion on the federal program as a whole, but there's no question that the effects of the Paycheck Protection Program help stimulate our local economy here in Quincy, when our businesses and their families need it the most. I want to say thank you for letting me speak in front of you all today. I must say that I couldn't be any prouder to have grown up, lived, and now work for such a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So the state of economic development, as, as we've heard, you know, has gone from pre-COVID to post-COVID. We've been able to illustrate the touches. And again, all of this was done remotely. If you'll all recall that we were ordered at the beginning of this, this pandemic to work from home. So it's an important feature that, you know, when we're talking about Jim Scribby and Maureen Gary and the rest of the staff reaching out to people, they're reaching out from home, they're working this project and these projects from home. And I just want to remind all those that are listening, that the dedication that they showed in this process, they didn't, they, they, they weren't looking for a pat on the back and, you know, we're not trying to put ourselves up there with the heroes of, of the pandemic. We are not the Police Department, the Fire Department, the first responders. But what we try to do and what we will continue to do is to be the resource that makes businesses in Quincy happy that they're here and try to do as much as we can. Repairs, no. There are folks that probably had some bumps along the way, guaranteed. But we continue to work and we continue to, to make sure that businesses get as much help as we can give them and take advantage of any programs that are out there. So the state of economic development, obviously the world has changed and what, and to what extent, it's too, still too early to tell. We're not seeing any real slowdown on the housing. That of course could change. But as you all know, and as all you see in the city of Quincy, one of the important things that happened is we were able to stay open and continue to build housing. And that housing, Rob, that might be US. Thank you. Housing, you know, we were able to basically, you know, continue to work on residential housing in the city. Yeah, we took some heat from it. There were those that said, you know, why are you doing this? Boston has already shut down their housing. Well, housing is, is a critical part of what economic development means in this city. And, you know, obviously the tax levy is our main source of income in the city. We're not a community that, you know, really relies as, as strongly as others do on hotel, motel, meals, tax, et cetera. Housing has been a godsend to us and I, I say that. The real estate market continues to attract investors and the banks continue to lend. You know, the long-term ramifications for commercial and office real estate is something that we're going to continue to follow and we're going to continue to watch. There are some businesses with less people working in offices, but we've not had that exodus. In fact, Stop &amp; Shop, as I mentioned, added 200 jobs and speaking to them, they have not laid off anybody in, in this pandemic era. So that's pretty exciting to us. And again, we look forward to them to move forward. South Shore Health, as you know, has opened a new facility at 1495 Hancock Street. I know, because that's where I go to have my blood pressure checked. And they're doing a bang-up job with me on that. And, you know, there are other pieces of the investments that the city has made. And again, at no point should it go unsaid, and every so often I'll come back to this, with this council's help, we've been able to keep all of this going. And with that, I'd like to intro to Rob here. I've asked Rob to focus on how the city's investment in itself has spurred economic development. Rob is the longest-serving member of this department, rising through the ranks. This is his 17th year in the planning department. And I'd like to have Rob walk you through government investment and infrastructure in the city, if I could.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, councilors. Always a pleasure to see all of you and, and get a chance to, you know, speak to you about what we do every day. As Jim mentioned, I've been here quite a while, so I, I, my memory kind of goes back. I, I have turned into, to one of those folks you go to, to ask questions of, of what went before, which I, I consider is, is a great privilege and, and I feel really lucky as a planner to have been here with the city for as long as I have. And I continue to look forward to punching that clock every day. The, the government investment, in my mind and in my role, is huge on economic development. Our whole economy, our whole society is based off of infrastructure, whether that's subsurface utilities, whether that's roadway infrastructure. Folks need roads to drive on to get to work. They need rails to take the train on to get to work. And in my tenure here, the city has not been short on investing in those important areas. The schools come to mind. Several new school buildings have been built. That's critical for when the city wants to market itself, to folks locating here for work, for living. Having a good, a good school system is one of those foundational elements to, to good communities. We've rehabbed our significant city buildings. Old City Hall obviously comes to mind and the, and the refurbished Great Hall is a fantastic space. I hope we do get to go back there one day soon. But there's others. Clottington Hall, where our office is located, got a rehab. There's the Senior Center in North Quincy, Dog Park, and, and most recently, the Public Safety Complex is making its way to becoming a reality soon. But it's not just Quincy investment. And folks, you know, got to appreciate investment from the Commonwealth as well. The several state offices are now called Quincy Home, whether that's the Registry of Motive Vehicles, or we have a number of regional offices with Mass Development, Department of Transitional Assistance. And another big component that we see coming on the horizon is obviously the need for a updated courthouse. So we look forward to engaging with the, the court folks, DCAM, on working on a, a next-generation courthouse for the city of Quincy. Roadway infrastructure, huge. I've worked an awful lot on that. In fact, I was part of the concourse roadway project when I first came to the city. But there is yearly street paving, sidewalk paving. The city is following the Complete Streets model, which takes into account the whole right-of-way sidewalks. I think a lot of folks see bicycle lanes popping up with new roads being done over. There is obviously a number of state investments in the roadway infrastructure. Most recently, a big one that comes to mind is the Four River Bridge. Before that, the Napaunsa Bridge was rehabbed. We've had work at Crown Colony and obviously Quincy is home to a couple of interstate interchanges as well. And the big one, and probably one of the more important ones for economic development, is the MBTA's investment in the Red Line. That's in the Red Line cars, that's in the Red Line rail system. We all know there's some switchgear issues at JFK that hopefully will be resolved. And I think most important to all of us is the four stations are undergoing a major overhaul or an expansion of their role. Um, I think when the T, uh, the subway was extended in the early seventies, a lot of those stations were thought of as, uh, of car collectors. Um, now I, I think, uh, the, uh, we're, we're looking at, you know, pedestrians coming in, uh, bicyclists coming in, obviously the, the bus, uh, system pulling in folks, uh, to the stations, not just, uh, parking cars. Um, there's also been some major investments in stormwater infrastructure and this, uh, in coastal fortifications. And this is a, definitely an emerging issue, uh, I've seen grow in, um, in priority in my time here, uh, mainly because of the storms we faced, most recently, most recently March of twenty eighteen, uh, where we had a, a number of properties, uh, knocked out of commission. Uh, I was part of the effort to update the city's hazard mitigation plan a couple of years ago. And for the first time, uh, we incorporated, uh, climate change, uh, into that plan and, uh, projecting, uh, what, uh, future, uh, councilors, future planners, uh, in the city, uh, may face down the road. Um, that is led to a, 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 a number of, of projects, whether it's pump stations, whether it's seawall repairs. Uh, you know, there's an awful lot, uh, going on, uh, with stormwater. Another sneaky development that I've been part of, um, and I'm really excited for is the singe- city engineering offices, uh, initiated a major, uh, flood inundation modeling effort, uh, where we've broken down, uh, the city, I believe into, uh, twelve main, uh, watersheds. And within those watersheds, there's over two hundred microwatersheds. Uh, we are in the process of, uh, uh, doing modeling that will allow us to, to play Mother Nature in the future. You know, what happens with a storm event, with a certain amount of rainfall, with a certain amount of storm surge? That's going to be key, uh, for how we handle, uh, development in the future, uh, because that is, uh, going to be impacts, uh, both rainfall from the sky and obviously, uh, the seawater, uh, coming in, uh, from the ocean. The, um, other big investment I see with the city is bent into the parks and open space. And I am, uh, continue to be very proud to have been part of the team, uh, that, uh, made the Hancock Adams Common, uh, come to, uh, reality. I think that is a fantastic space. Uh, we've, uh, that project's won a number of engineering awards and historic preservation awards. But, you know, it's a signature park, but it, it didn't stop there. There's, there's parks all over the city, uh, have been, uh, updated. And we always ask, uh, those questions of, uh, developers when they come in, uh, you know, public space. What, what are those elements you're going to add, uh, to the city of Quincy? Um, the, that's so said, some of the government investment. Um, government can also, uh, affect economic development with its regulatory framework. And, um, you know, I'll start with the Quincy Center and what we've done there, which was, uh, adopted, uh, a diff, uh, financing model, uh, that pledges new tax growth. Uh, to date, the city's invested over a hundred and eighty million dollars in infrastructure, uh, subsurface infrastructure. Obviously the new Hancock Lot Garage, uh, as well as part of that. And, uh, that is setting the stage for, uh, the revitalization of Quincy Center. We've also used the Urban Renewal Planning, uh, Program. It's, uh, Chapter one twenty-one B with the Commonwealth, uh, to great success. Um, you know, that, that's helped us, uh, the city, um, redevelop the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area. Um, you know, acting as the master developer of those city-owned sites. Uh, we are currently, um, you know, we're working on the Hancock Lot and, and we're zeroing in on, on the Ross. The, uh, also the adoption of the North Quincy TOD zoning overlay district, uh, was a regulatory tool, uh, that was put in place to help us, um, uh, with the North Quincy development, uh, which is the city's real first true TOD development with it right on, uh, the train line, incorporating the station within the development. Uh, obviously we got, uh, mixed use, uh, so there's retail, uh, amenities, uh, to go along with the residential units. And, uh, another, uh, program, uh, the city nominated was the Opportunities Zone Program. That's tied, uh, through the federal tax code. Uh, city was allowed to advance two census tracts. Uh, one was Quincy Center and one, uh, was, uh, the, for the Quincy Point on the Shipyard Area. Um, so that's just a sample of some of the regulatory framework. I mentioned Urban Renewal and Diff. Uh, a lot of you know, uh, planning department has been into the Wallaston Business District and had a number of, uh, community meetings there, uh, trying to get feedback and, and thoughts on, uh, the vision for a revitalized Wallaston. And we are contemplating those tools, uh, to utilize, uh, uh, that rea- uh, that reality of unlocking, uh, revitalization there. Um, so to, 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 to look at some of the recent activity, um, that I see more from the land use perspective. Um, you know, I'll start with Quincy Center. Uh, I've had a lot of work, uh, or experience with that. Um, we continue to focus on, uh, the last two, uh, construction sites on the Hancock Lot. That is identified as the R two and the R three parcel. I believe the council is, uh, currently, uh, or will begin the process of reviewing that, that LDA there. Uh, we're doing a number of pre-development activities in the Ross area. Um, there is a number of, uh, impacted soils, uh, that were, uh, where the garage once stood, uh, that's being, uh, removed. Uh, most of that is, is headed out. I would note that the, um, the Mass DOT, who's in charge of the Bergen Bridge Project, uh, does have plans, I believe, starting this weekend, uh, to lift the new spans for the bridge into place. Uh, they're using a closing of the rail for the commuter rail, uh, to piggyback that activity. So we'll see, uh, that project really turn a corner, uh, towards completion. Uh, we also see the Clydesdale Extension Roadway leading down to the garage, uh, is starting to take shape. Uh, and we continue to work with Farcroc on moving forward with bringing the medical office, uh, to downtown Quincy. Uh, we've had some preliminary discussions on a certificate, uh, certificate of consistency filing. That's something, uh, the role, uh, the, the planning board will play for that. And we look forward to, to bringing that out front. Um, and the other sort of big piece with Quincy Center, uh, is the MBTA Station. Uh, the city is, is still working with the MBTA. The MBTA has a designated developer. Um, and we continue to kind of work through some of the engineering analysis. Um, uh, a primary focus is, uh, right now is, is the buses and, and the best way to relocate those, uh, with, uh, development to come, you know, after that. Um, so that's sort of the urban renewal, um, piece of downtown. But there is some other non-urban renewal, uh, downtown, um, investment, uh, that I'd also like to touch upon. Um, you know, we've seen the construction, um, of a office building, uh, by the Galvin Companies at the corner of McGrath Highway and Washington Street. That was, um, fantastic to see. Uh, the Beals Companies, um, they've have purchased the President's Place, uh, Office Building. Uh, we've worked with them to activate their street retail and, um, they've also incorporated the majority of the Quincy College, uh, operations. Uh, Beal Companies has also bought the Dran- uh, Granite Trust Building. Uh, we've worked with them with the historic up, uplighting and, uh, repairs to the facade of that historic building. And also, uh, assisting them with re-tenanting, uh, their first floor area. Uh, Jim's mentioned Stop and Shop has, uh, relocated, uh, professional staff, uh, to the Quincy Headquarters. Um, Stop and Shop's kind of an interesting, um, animal here in Quincy Center. Uh, there was a lot of hope, uh, early in downtown redevelopment that Stop and Shop would expand here. Uh, their parent company, Royal Ahold, had, uh, unfortunately purchased a, a mid-Atlantic grocery chain, a giant food and, and a lot of the corporate left, uh, the Stop and Shop realm and then went down to the mid-Atlantic in Pennsylvania, uh, to the giant food companies. Um, they were down there, you know, pushing ten years, uh, but felt that out in the suburbs wasn't for them. And they've relocated the, the, their North American supermarket operations up here, uh, to Quincy Center. And that resulted in, in their need for more space, uh, hence their, uh, expansion, uh, across the Granite Street into the, uh, former SAR Building. Uh, a very exciting sign. Um, the, uh, Beth Israel, uh, Deaconess, uh, Milton Hospital, uh, has, uh, decided to, uh, locate here in Quincy Center. And they're currently, uh, closing in on a, an opening in the next few weeks of a, of a medical facility over on Parking Way. And, uh, we've witnessed recently that the Star Market Complex, uh, off of Grand Street as well, uh, go through a major renovation. All, um, you know, great investment, um, you know, so we try to look at not just the new construction, but are we able to encourage existing business owners to invest in their, in their buildings? And, and we have seen quite a bit of evidence of that. Uh, it was mentioned earlier, uh, but it, it's worth saying it again. Uh, in the last five years, usually, uh, this office, uh, with all of our work in downtown, works cooperatively with the building department on tenant fit-outs in Quincy Center. And we've seen fifty new businesses, um, tenant fit-outs, uh, come through this office. And we see that as a, a very healthy sign of economic, uh, activity in, in the downtown. Um, so that's Quincy Center. That gets a lion's share, but, uh, we know there's a lot, uh, a lot of other great areas in the city. Um, I think the, the big one that I think most folks see would be North Quincy and what's happened up in that neck of the woods. Um, we've had, obviously, the North Quincy T Station, the Abbey Development, uh, you know, re- again, represents a true TOD development, uh, with residential and commercial uses, uh, tied to the station. Uh, there's a new hotel, uh, the Holiday Inn Staybridge Suites, uh, that was located. And I would mention that was on a former, uh, industrial site, a former brownfield. Uh, so that's, uh, a positive reuse, uh, uh, in the eyes of, of the planners, uh, uh, me and obviously the, uh, I'm assuming the assessors and tax collectors. Um, there is also been several new multifamily developments up there. And, uh, the ones that happened on what was formerly Arlington Street is a, is a good example of how the city can try to help support some of that development where, um, Arlington Street had been, uh, divided in half, uh, in years past with the, the Stop and Shop development. Uh, so we took that opportunity, uh, to rename that street, the Stratton Way and the for, uh, in honor of the former, uh, POW, which is, is a great, um, you know, that's, that's character. That's, that's Quincy. Um, and, you know, with these opportunities and major redevelopment, you know, we try to look to improve the connectivity, uh, to the North Quincy Business District, uh, and some of those surrounding neighborhoods. And, uh, you know, we think the pedestrian environment is a lot better, uh, in that stretch. Uh, it's still a busy spot, that's for sure. Um, the Marina Bay Peninsula continues to mature. Um, the construction of the Mary Elder Par- uh, Apartments, it included the expansion of the, of the boardwalk. Um, we have the new FedEx Brown Facility, uh, in the former Jordan Marsh Warehouse, uh, part of the Boston Scientific Campus. And, you know, which is key from, from us, a nice long-term, um, investment is the construction, uh, of the Commander Shea Boulevard Extension, providing the direct connection to Squanton Point Park. And, uh, also it, it starts to lay out the necessary infrastructure for, uh, what we hope to be a future full-time ferry stop, um, and, and ferry service for that area. Um, from North Quincy, you know, we can look into Wallaston. Uh, I mentioned we've engaged in the community and some vision in sessions to try to, you know, figure out what is that vision, uh, for a revitalized Wallaston. Uh, we've, uh, this, uh, the planning department has gone ahead and reached out to a lot of the major landowners in the area, uh, indicating, uh, the city's desire to encourage redevelopment in that, uh, spot. And, you know, we've had a, a lot of good conversations since. Um, we're currently analyzing the, uh, in, the infrastructure needs of the area and, and trying to develop that strategy. Uh, and, and hopefully we'll be back before the council, uh, and not too far from now with a more organized, uh, a plan, you know, possibly through an urban renewal, uh, 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 plan for that area. Um, Quincy Point, um, the shipyard is, is looming, uh, I think over the city, always has. My grandfather, you know, uh, worked there at one time. Um, I think I remember the last, uh, LNG tanker to embark there and, and back in the eighties. Um, it is designated as a deep-water port by the Commonwealth. Uh, so what is that? The Commonwealth designates a handful of ports, um, and really limits the uses that can occur in those ports. Marine industry is, is really the emphasis. Uh, we've, uh, always been, uh, very, working very closely with, uh, Mr. Quirk and his team. Um, he has, uh, received approval to, uh, by the state to, uh, convert his existing office building there on East Howard Street, you know, farther away from the water, uh, into, uh, or rehab it and, and add, uh, some office capacity, which he's doing. And, uh, we will continue to work with, with that team. Um, we recently saw some economic activity, uh, that was very positive. The former, uh, Tom O'Brien Hyundai dealership, uh, sat derelict for a period of time. And, you know, we, uh, saw our, uh, uh, folks come in and, uh, rehab that facility to make it a, a new commercial, uh, uh, strip mall, uh, with a number of tenants that, you know, are all doing well in there. Um, in West Quincy, we, we kind of look at the Center Street, Copeland Street, Willard Street area. Uh, Willard Street has seen, uh, a lot of recent activity. We have another office building, a twenty-two thousand, uh, square foot os- office building going up at, uh, two eighteen Willard Street. We've also, uh, permitted a new mixed-use building at the corner of Willard and, uh, Bates Ave, um, that, uh, is, uh, on, uh, you know, will be coming out of the ground soon. And we do expect additional, uh, investment in this area, uh, largely due to, uh, its, its proximity to the highway system. Um, some other sort of anecdotal items that I see from the land use, uh, piece is, uh, we've seen a number of banks come to Quincy, uh, whether it's TD Bank, Chase, Harbor One. Um, and we ask them, you know, why, why pick Quincy? We seem to have a lot of banks in Quincy and the, and their comments are, 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 you know, pretty right on, which is, uh, Quincy residents, you know, have money, um, and have needs for banking services. Uh, we've also seen a, a number of storage facilities pop up in Quincy. We ask, uh, those same questions. And, um, you know, do you think we need another storage facility? And, and the answer is yes. Um, you know, and I asked, you know, who do you think is, it needs these? And surprisingly, they say the majority of their customers are, are, are commercial users. They're not residential users. And by commercial users is there's a number of people that work, uh, that don't have an office to report to. Uh, they're outside sales, they could be contractors. Um, you know, maybe they, they don't have room in their garage or it, or in their apartment. And they have a need to have, uh, some storage for their, uh, for their profession. Um, and we've seen a little bit of an evolution. So two are up already, one, uh, off of Bergen Parkway, one, uh, over off of Washington Street. Uh, we did permit a third one, uh, which is going to be behind the Quincy Adams Station. And I think this is a, a good example of how we as a city try to be flexible when we work with, um, these, these businesses. The, uh, storage facility wanted to, um, have obviously a UPS and a FedEx drop-off pickup location. That makes sense. But they also wanted to incorporate some shared office space into, into their, um, into their office component within the storage facility. And that is a little bit new. Um, you know, talking to the building department, that's not something they always see, uh, um, and, um, in talking with them and understanding, you know, what they needed, it was back to that person that's, you know, working out of their car. From time to time, there's a need for them to set up meetings, meet new clients and those types of things. And a storage facility is actually came along and is going to provide a space. It's for their customers. It's not open to the general public. It's one of the services that they want to offer. But, um, you know, we, you know, in talking to the building department, you know, we're in favor of, of adding that component within that storage facility. And, and it is going to happen. So, um, that's what, you know, I try to do. I think that's what staff tries to do. We try to, you know, listen to what, you know, the businesses are, are looking for and, and see if we can go ahead and, and try to make that happen. So, um, that's sort of my rundown on, you know, Quincy Center. Obviously some other parts of the city, which are very important as well. Uh, and with that, uh, Jim, I'll hand this back to you.
All right. Well, thank you, Rob. Um, I, I just want to, uh, I, I know it's getting late and I know people have probably got some things to do. Uh, I just want to add that, uh, through this process, I thought it was important to get some, uh, analysis that, uh, can speak to, you know, where we stand. Uh, one of the questions is, you know, how do we stand with the communities around us? So I, I reached out to, uh, someone we all know and love, uh, Eric Mason, our new CFO. And I asked him to do some, uh, do some, not just data collection, but do some analysis, a deep dive into, you know, how do we stand up? Because it's a good question to ask, you know, are we, are we standing up against our peers? And, uh, I just want to give you a quick, uh, rundown of what he had to say to me. Um, uh, of course, it's got a little Eric speak, so bear with me for just a minute. When judging the delta related to economic variations, he does this better than I do. There are two positions that must be thoroughly examined. There is no significant insights to be gained. The first is absolute and the second is comparative. From an absolute perspective, many statistics can be cited, but the two most prominent, I would like to address, are median income and the poverty rate. An economy that only pushes median actor upwards at the cost of rear income curve stagnation is an economy that creates inequity.
Uh, Jim, um, would you want to maybe waive the reading of that? Uh, Jim, um, would you want to maybe waive the reading of that?
Well, I was thinking that, uh, I wouldn't get that far, I thought, uh, they'd come at me with that. Um, I, I, I'm going to give you the crypt notes. Uh, Eric basically concluded. And the report is going to be available with every other thing that we, that we're quoting tonight and what our background material is. According to the US Census, Quincy has the lowest poverty rate of the ten largest cities in Massachusetts. Our poverty rate is ten point eight percent versus the weighted average of nineteen point seven, a difference of forty-five point one percent. Quincy has the second highest median house income of the same group. Quincy medium household income is seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars versus the weighted. Average of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, the difference of twenty-five point five percent. These two might, uh, metrics echo other economic metrics and show that Quincy is comparatively outpacing its peers. In the economic development space, so, um, again, I, I want you. To have an opportunity to read all this information, I, I know it's getting late, so I'm going to wrap up with this. Um, you know, we'll, we'll take some questions, obviously, but, um, you know. We will provide a written summary of our presentation post-meeting. Uh, we will respond to questions now, or if you would like to give us written inquiries. Be more than happy, uh, to, uh, answer them and, uh, they'll allow us to give you more complete responses. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank the Quincy City Council for, you know, who, who forward questions and opportunities. And thoughts about serving the business community, uh, and help serve our mission and the community. I want to thank the business community as well for, 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 for working so hard with us. I'd like to thank the, uh, city, uh, you know, Chamber of Commerce for its leadership. And, uh, lastly, I'd like to thank my staff, they put a lot of time into this, they care. And, uh, with that, I, you know, hand it back to you, Madam Chair, for any questions that you'd like to throw at us and, uh. Again, if we can't, uh, answer them tonight, uh, we will be recording them and, uh, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. Uh, regarding any of the information that we spoke about tonight, so with that, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Jim, that was a very thorough, um, report, um, you did cover the whole city. I, um, and I appreciate that because I did the state of the city as a whole, I was, I was thinking it was just going to be the downtown, but I, I think that gives us a good perspective. Of what is going on with the whole city, I know that Noel Debona had his hand up, so I'm going to turn that over to Noel to see what, uh, Noel, you have for.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, um, um, I want to thank the planning department, um, Jim Fatsis and his team. For coming in tonight via Zoom and, and just giving the whole rundown. You know, starting, when I first got onto the city council in two thousand, well, two thousand fifteen, when I was campaigning for the at-large position. And being on here for now the fifth year, I've saw, I've seen a, a lot of difference in, in the city. Uh, it makes me proud to be part of this city as a resident and growing up here. Um, just what we have done over the last five years and campaigning and seeing the mo- mutual, um, the mutual fire. Where is the West of Chestnut being built, it was actually in the ground and I remember going through that area, it was like a bomb exploded. And I was actually eating at the fours the other day and to look up and see the development and the green space and the open space and. Um, the garage there, it, it's actually coming into fruition. Um, we've off, obviously bonded roads, sidewalks, we've also done some C R A repairs and we've done a lot of, uh, improvements. Your team has done a great job, um, through this COVID-nineteen pandemic. There's two areas that I really, um, been looking into that are really going to be the future of our city, um, I think. The housing, what we have for obviously stock, single families. And then, um, our development, particularly the two areas of my concern are downtown and Wallaston. The Wallaston Theater where it used to be, Wallaston Area. Um, I'll start with the housing real quick. I've been seeing obviously Boston's been, and in New York are going through these in, in cities. Um, where they're having Exodus, people are leaving these, you know, Boston's and New York's because they're working from home. It's very expensive, um, you know, Quincy or, or suburb or south of these cities, south or north of these cities. Um, could see a spike in, in, in needing inventory, uh, whether it be via condominium, apartment slash single families. Oh, oh, I, I've been in my house now for the last six years, we finally got into the downstairs cellar. We're starting to, you know, doing over now because obviously the COVID has changed the position of. Are the kids going to be able to go to school full-time? Um, am I going to be able to work home or have to work at, at an office, so. People right now are in a situation where they're making additions to their houses, whether it be making little porches. And doing them over and making more space for an office, doing over a cellar for playrooms. Um, that seems to be the biggest, big thing that's happening right now a- across, um, the United States or even in the world. People need to find more space in their house because they might be confined to it based on the COVID-nineteen pandemic, including myself. We're going through a project now downstairs in the cellar, got to do it over and make it for like a playroom. Because if the kids are secluded from going outdoors and we're, we're regulated from that, we're going to have to find. Other areas of the house to be in, especially going through the winter season coming up. Um, obviously, if you don't have spaces for your office and you want to do Zoom like this and get in a quiet place with a bunch of kids. You have to have another office space, um, are you seeing a spike in, in, in actually like? I know some people can do it by right, but some people have to come in for variances to do over particularly areas of their houses. Is that particularly been something that's a little more common to happen right now?
Well, to answer that question, um, Noel, you're, you're kind of speaking to a rezé issue, um, which is. You know, individual homes, uh, i- is it making sense to do additions? Um, I don't want to suggest that, I, I can't tell you that we see a lot of action. Uh, but that's the only information that I've received from Mr. Duka.
Okay.
Professional services could give you a full rundown on now what is being permitted, uh, in the single-family home market.
Let me, let me swing over to the second issue of, of what I'm really getting into, I, I just wanted to note that for everybody going through this pandemic. But the development in downtown, I know when I first started, there, I know you guys talked about some great things that are happening. Um, that have been happening throughout the city and they've been fantastic. There are a few areas that I still continuously talk about up at the city council. The Hancock Street Corridor, uh, we've, we've had a couple deliberations in the city council about some of the missing things that we don't have in the city. For instance, um, you know, um, I know some of us have lived here quite a while, remember the old Wonder Bowl, where we go bowling? Um, I've talked about the bowling alley situation and, you know, I know there's kings out there. You gotta go to Dead, you gotta go to Dedham or you gotta go to Boston Bowl in Boston or Hanover. We still haven't gotten to that function of, of having a place where we can get some type of development for a bowling alley. Another area that I see is another thing is for the health kick pe- people out there or even eating healthier, is a Whole Foods or a Trader Joe's. Um, Trader Joe's, I gotta go to Hingham, uh, Whole Foods, I gotta go to like Dedham or, 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 or Hingham as well. Um, the development in the downtown, is there ever a way of getting, and another thing that is, was Wallson. Center, which is the Wallston Theater, which is missing, those, those three components, um, would make a little bit more complete Quincy. Um, is there any other funding sources that we can develop over the next few years that gives? Uh, I guess an incentive, incentivize businesses to come to Quincy and do business here, is there any way of? Is there any other, I know we did a lot with the affordable housing for some of the businesses who were going through the COVID. Is there any way of borrowing upon the diff, or is there any other funding sources that we can find to stimulate economic growth now? Rather than waiting and waiting for it to be fully developed and then waiting for someone to come in? Can we, can we jumpstart it somehow? Uh, that's a question I asked Mr. Fatsy.
Uh, I, I think we have, uh, jumpstarted, uh, and we, we've spent, uh, the diff wisely. Diff is really intended to take care of infrastructure. Um, you know, it's a, it's a different, difficult call, uh, as I started the conversation, I said, you know. The bulk of, of, uh, of property in the city of Quincy is owned by, uh, private enterprise. Uh, private enterprise has a choice as to what they can do, we have entertained a couple of programs. Uh, and we spent a lot of time with the folks up at Crown Colony. Uh, we had a company come through, take a look at the area, want to put in a driving range, kind of an indoor driving range. That, uh, you know, would serve a recreational need, with a little bit of, uh, you know, uh, other, other stuff there. That would, you know, games and so forth, that would allow, you know, people to come, maybe hit a few balls, have something to eat and, uh, then. Also have a little arcade where the kids could play. Um, that is a popular Florida, uh, company that, that, you know, came to us, tailor-made. Uh, but that is probably not going to be something you're going to see for a while. And I say that because, uh, Quincy Center isn't necessarily going to have the space for some of these, these. Things that you're talking about, say a bowling alley. Uh, and again, it takes the will of, uh, a private investor who owns property to take that property. And, uh, put that type of project or that type of, uh, uh, business there. Uh, we listen to all comers, we've gone out and spoken to many people on, uh, on different entertainment venues. To be quite frank with you, um, the entertainment industry is, you know, basically shut down until the middle of next summer. Uh, we're not hearing very good things about, you know, the ability, uh, for companies to. I, I mean Broadway is shutting down until the middle of next year. Um, it, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, I, I think it's, it's also, you know, something I'd like to see more. Uh, diversity of business, but, uh, a- at this time, we don't own the land, we don't control the land. And, uh, it, it's very hard to go out and find an investor right now. That would say that that would be the ideal use of a piece of, uh, land, so. Uh, I, I honestly tell you that it's, uh, something that I don't anticipate it being easy. Uh, we're always listening, uh, counselor, and, and we're always anxious to, to do things that, uh. You know, will add to the, uh, to the cachet, add to the, to the fun in the city. Um, but I would honestly say to you right now, uh, I've talked to so many business owners and people that are willing to build housing. But they're not really interested in doing a whole lot more, uh, the commercial folks, as we know. Uh, even, uh, you know, those that are, uh, you know, planning to come, that, they're all kind of taking a look. They're kind of taking a look at, do they change their business model? And, uh, I, I can honestly say that, uh, uh, as, as we hear it, we'll share it. We'll try to put people together so that they can, uh, you know, do some of those things that, that you've, you've talked about. Uh, the Wallston Theater is an interesting situation. Um, the, the Wallston Theater came to us with a residential, uh, plan with, uh. We, we were hoping for retail on the first floor, that, they gave us a parking lot on the first floor. Uh, and the parking lot literally would take up a portion of Wallaston Center. Uh, we talked to them, we explained to them that we didn't feel that that was in the best interest. Uh, Wallaston has had a lot of interest and, uh, you know, I have, have some good news, uh, that one of the bigger players in Wallaston. Who was, uh, waiting to, to do something in, in Wallaston, uh, was able to secure the last piece of property. Uh, that abutted theirs, uh, which was, uh, as, as you know, uh, there were folks that were looking at the area. That abutted the Mug and Muffin Restaurant and the Mug and Muffin Restaurant has now sold their property to them. So that's more frontage on the street, the conversation, uh, with them included a brewery the last time around. They still want to put a restaurant of some nature in there, maybe a taproom, whatever. We're, we're, we're working with them, literally today, I got a call from them and they'd like to reload and, uh, have that conversation, so. I, 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 I hear you, uh, there's been, uh, it's interesting, uh, you know, uh, that corner, um. Some restaurants went out, restaurants have gone in, uh, on, on the corner of Bill and Hancock. Um, we're still attracting restaurants, uh, I can't tell you that, I wouldn't like to see, uh, you know, some more. Uh, recreational facilities, um, we're spending a lot of money parks, as you know, and we're doing things as well as we can. But, um, uh, I, I, I have to demure on the fact that I, uh, certainly can't. Get as specific as saying I can get this kind of business in, we talked to them all and, uh. If, uh, if, if there's an opportunity, um, I absolutely echo your sentiment. And, uh, do everything we can to, uh, get more diverse, uh, product in the city.
Last, um, just to touch up a little bit on, on what you said and, and I fully understand with going with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we don't know how long it's going to go on for. What we're limited on doing, um, it still kind of gets me to the point of, I know the trend has been, uh, residential mixed use. Residential on the top floor and then on the bottom floor being any type of office space or retail or whatever the case may be. That's been the trend, I've seen it all over all of the towns and cities, um, it still gets to, to the function of. Um, what's a place that we continuously can do, um, throughout the COVID, obviously you can go into supermarkets. Um, the Whole Foods and the Trader Joe's seems to be, especially a Whole Foods, because they, y- you can go into the facility, into the. Into the slash market, but you can also purchase food at lunch, you can, you can also get coffee in there as well. Um, that seems like be something that you can put into a, a mixed use type of downtown development. On the bottom floors of, uh, whatever is going to be built, you know, for instance, um, yeah.
Let me speak to that, uh, Whole Foods specifically, we've spoken to them on a number of occasions. Whole Foods wants to own the ground that it's on, uh, they are not interested in a ground lease, we've talked to them about ground lease. Uh, and, uh, Trader Joe's, uh, a- again, uh, has, uh, has been spoken, we've spoken with them. Uh, you know, they haven't said we'll never come to Quincy or anything and neither has, uh, Whole Foods, but, uh. You know, Star Market has just put a lot of money into their, their, uh, their, their, uh, their store. Uh, Stop and Shop obviously is a big player in the city, um, the new, uh, rest, uh, excuse me, the new supermarket in North Quincy. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it requires you have to get these folks to own the land. That's what the, the, the folks you're talking about are, are looking for, so. Um, uh, you know, uh, we hear you and, uh, we, again, uh, anything we can do to help, we will, uh, we've. We've heard this many times and again, I like those, I like those stories as well and, uh. Hopefully, uh, you know, as we go forward, we'll get a chance to do some new things, but, uh, I, I, it's, it's kind of beyond. Uh, the recruiting, uh, capacity we have, uh, to, to, you know, have them come in. Uh, we will be the matchmaker anytime that, uh, someone comes in and is asking for, uh, additional space for something, so. Uh, I appreciate your question.
Thank you, I, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done with all the development and stuff that's gone through the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, I appreciate, I want to divert the time to my other colleagues here, if they have any questions, but thank you so much, you guys, you guys did a great job tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks Noel, um, Nina, I think you had your, you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I, so I'm actually just going to start by bouncing off of, uh, Counselor Debona's question about the residential, so. I know from just keeping an eye on the market that, um, quite a number of condos are being put up for sale because a lot of folks are finding that. You know, luckily in the jobs that they're in, um, more often than not, they're saying for the rest of twenty-twenty-one, they're going to be working remotely. You know, maybe even beyond that, and so, again, just keeping an eye on the market right now, I know that a lot of condos are being up, um. But being, being put up for sale and then folks are moving to areas like Sharon, um, you know, Pembroke. Anywhere else other than somewhere that's close to the city and I know that leading up into this year, we were seeing a big boom here in the city as well. Because a lot of folks want affordable options closer to the city, closer to the train stations and so, you know, as I'm. Out driving around, I notice that there is still development happening in this sort of greater Boston area, are you still seeing that attraction and that desire for? Commercial buildings to be built for, uh, rental units here in the city?
When, when you say, um, uh, commercial, you mean residential buildings?
Sure, yeah, yeah, but I mean like the big ones, right, so I always, I always refer to those as commercial just because they're towers, I'm not talking about like small. You know, units in the neighborhoods that are like sort of townhomes and talking like the towers that we're looking at.
We have spoken, uh, as recently as a month ago with somebody that would like to put a very large, uh, residential, uh, tower in the city. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's back to the, the point, uh, you know, they're trying to assemble land to do so. Uh, there are not so many places you can put a tower, uh, we have not seen any drop-off in, uh, residential. Uh, large residential is limited to. Large residential is limited to the, the lots that you can put enough units on. It always comes down to parking. We have to have them park themselves. But there's been no shortage as, as recently as two days ago. I had a major player who is very interested in the city. Again, no shortage of people looking. There's a shortage of locations to put them. And in some cases, the areas they'd like to put them are not suitable for that type of, that type of building. But we pay attention. We're, we're very interested with the fact that, you know, Peter O'Connell's building just went up, just opened. He's at 60% occupancy already. He's leasing up very well. I spoke to LBC last week. They told me they are 99% at Nova Residences in Quincy Center. There are a great many folks that are also taking advantage of the fact that they don't have to live in Boston anymore and pay higher rates. So that is sending people further south. And again, they want to stay on the red line. They want to be transit oriented and that market has not changed. We are not seeing any pullback whatsoever. So we're watching it, we're monitoring it. And, you know, some people may be moving south, it's, it's probably, or north or wherever. We're also experiencing some baby boomers are trying to downsize, get out of.
I was going to ask you, yeah, what the demographic is. I mean, you said you were talking to these folks and that O'Connell's at 60% occupancy. LBC is at about 99%. Did they mention what the demographic looks like right now for people that are looking to?
Generally, people that were working and living in, in Boston is, is really what's filling their buildings. And different parts of Boston. It's also people from Quincy that are, you know, moving into one bedrooms. What we're seeing is a lot of folks where, you know, and I'm sure you know, folks that, you know, four or five guys, Jim Scribby, and his friends are living in a, a, a large unit in Boston, South Boston. You know, then they, they move along in their career and they want to, you know, they want their own place. So one bedroom studios become more attractive. We're not seeing a whole lot of folks clamoring for three bedroom apartments. So the demographic is largely one and two bedroom apartments are what's being built and what's being utilized. So that, that is trending, so to speak. But we have very high residential occupancy rates in the city. And, and the prices are still lower than they are in suburban, excuse me, in, in Boston. Even as you go out into Dorchester, the prices in what I always used to call the, the parishes, St. Brendan's, you know, that area are absolutely, they're up there and they're, they're very sound. There's a shortage of that. So folks are still coming in our direction. That's why we're seeing the renovation and that's why we're seeing the interest. So again, the pandemic is, is the wild card, of course. But generally speaking, those folks that are professionals and, and Boston has a great number of professionals. We're also seeing a lot of college students that are opting into non-traditional, you know, dormitory housing and going, and in many cases getting a one or two bedroom and living in Quincy. So that's, that's just another market that we attract because of our proximity to the city.
Okay. And then you mentioned the T earlier and I wanted to go back to that for a little bit. And I think this might have been you, Rob, talking about the overhaul of the T stations and this transit oriented development. But I had heard, you know, I think it was last week that the project for their orange line and red line trains are about a year behind. And I imagine that some of their other projects are also significantly delayed because of the pandemic on top of, you know, their general delays that they face year in and year out. How much are we dependent on the work that they do for the projects that we want to see happening across the city? Because again, you know, if we're looking at the incentive that developers have to come into the city, like you were saying, Jim, right? Their, their incentive is to build around the train stations that we have here. My thought process behind that is then, okay, well, we want to build in areas where the train is going to build transit oriented development, like what we're seeing here in North Quincy. But if they're already a year behind in just one project, it just makes me anxious about what else they might be behind and that's going to impact our ability to plan as well, right? I mean, you look at Quincy Center, I remember they came in front of us years ago, you know, with this big grandiose idea of what they wanted to do in Quincy Center. I'm glad, it seems like we're not necessarily waiting for them to come to the table anymore, but I just want to be mindful of that because I feel like that also ties your hands, you know what I mean, as members of the planning department, to look full scale and say Quincy Adams to Quincy Center, Wallaston, especially like Counselor DeBona was saying, you know, what are we going to do in this area? And we're always trying to keep in mind what the MBTA wants to do. But frankly, if they're going to come up with a plan and then be three or four years behind, that puts us three or four years behind, right? So that all being said, I guess my question is, in our planning stages, in the areas around the T stations, how much are we really including them in their planning in that process? Or are we sort of saying, you know, this is the ideal situation if we had the MBTA involved, but this is our plan regardless if they're going to move with us? Does that make sense?
Yes. Ultimately, the MBTA, to speak to what you're saying, the orange line and the red line cars are delayed. There still is a great deal of work being done on the tracks. You know, we mentioned in Dorchester, they had rail issues that were significant. They are, those, those, the folks that are manufacturing the trains themselves are delayed. But it doesn't really change and hasn't dimmed those people that are knocking on my door. I'll take Wallaston for a minute, that piece of property that some wonderful people tagged the blue long wall there right across from the Wallaston Station. That piece of property, more people call me and say, can I buy that? And I'm talking about folks that we know and are very, very anxious to control land around the T station. There's been no shortage.
What I mean is that we're, we're going to be, we're going to be moving forward regardless if the T wants to build something in and around that area. Because whether it's the cars and the developers for the cars or, I mean, my, just to be like, you know, fully transparent here, my confidence in the T and the MBTA is extremely low, you know? So whether it's the train or the fares or whatever mess that is they're dealing with from one day to the next, like, I have no confidence in them. And so if we are moving forward and wanting to see something realized in and around these train stations, I guess my question is like, I want to make sure that we are not waiting for them and we're planning around them.
We're not. There is still a lot of interest in the Quincy Center Station project. And, you know, they are, the folks, Atlantic Bezuto, would love to get their hands on the Quincy Center Station at some later date. And that's, that's, hasn't waned. They're very excited about what's going on in Wallaston, excuse me, in North Quincy. And they're feeling very good about, you know, their progress and that project continuing to build out at the schedule that it's on. We speak to them all the time, literally weekly. We, we haven't felt there has been any drop off in interest in Quincy around the transit oriented development sites. Very solid. There are folks that are starting to move away from the center a little further. They, they tell us, well, it's, it's transit oriented, you know, we're up to a half a mile away. But those properties are changing hands and those folks are still very anxious to develop them. Again, I, I don't have the insight beyond what you have. But we ask all the questions all the time. We are on the phone with, as I mentioned, Secretary Caneely. We've asked him specific questions about the MBTA and setbacks. Maureen Gary came in to my office the other day and said, did you read the article about, you know, could the ferry service be interrupted and could it go away? So we immediately called to ask and they said that's not their plan currently. But their revenues are definitely being affected by people that are not taking public transportation because of safety concerns. Again, if we are to believe, and I think the optimist in all of us is that we're going to get our hands around this endemic over a period of time, will not change the location near a T station. It's still an exceptional place to own real estate. And I can tell you the interest around the Wallaston T Station. And also even the North Quincy T Station, people are, you know, the, the folks that are building there and Newport, you know, they're still thrilled they're there and still working and putting dollars to work. You know, a big piece of this is, we've been very fortunate because the trades did continue to work in the city of Quincy. So things are still going on and, but again, I, I, I hope to share with you as we get the information, understanding the sensitivity. We'll reach out to the MBTA and again, with the mayor's offices help. The mayor's office spends a lot of time, you know, with Secretary Pollock, more than you'd, you'd ever believe. And she's been great to us. So what we want to do is get some more information for you and I'm, I'm on it.
Well, well, Jim, I, I could add a little bit, I think, for the counselor. I think when it comes to the T developing their own sites, they, they don't do it. You know, they, they are in the business of trains and buses. What we've witnessed is, starting with North Quincy, they put out a request for proposals to the development community. The group that came in was Atlantic Bezuto. As soon as they were chosen, before they developed any plans, they come in and will engage with us here at the city on, you know, what's our zoning, what are, what are we looking for? So in my earlier comments on Quincy Center, again, the T is not doing the development. They did another RFP for the Quincy Center Station. It just so happened, the same group doing North Quincy, you know, prevailed in that RFP by the T. And, and that's the stage that we're in now. I, you know, the real tough detail is the Quincy Center Station is the, the terminus of 14 bus lines. So it's how do we manage those buses? And one of the difficulties with Quincy Center is, is the traffic. And although we got the intersection signalized, the spot where you enter the station, you know, by the Starbucks there, to greatly improve that area, there are, we're, we're currently designing plans to flip a lot of that T access or the bus access onto Bergen Parkway. So it comes in and, and we're dealing with elevations and layers. So that engineering kind of needs to get figured out. And then from that, the development sites will grow off of, you know, the newly engineered station. So when we look at Wallaston, the T has not issued an RFP for the, just their land. I think Jim was talking about, you know, the private land all around the station. That, that's a bit of a different argument. I think you were trying to get right to the T. With the Quincy Adams Station, a couple of things are happening with that one. One is that garage was built in the early eighties. So the T made a decision, they could invest heavily in some deferred maintenance of that facility and keep it going. But we also know that the T is, has eyes and plans on acquiring the Lowe's, former Lowe's Home Improvement Site and creating a bus maintenance facility there and relocate off of Hancock Street. So the Quincy Adams Station is currently undergoing an update. When we look at that, one of the areas we, we thought was a potential was in the back there. That is the location where the storage facility had came forward and got permitted. So when we look at that Quincy Adams, we look out to the front. There's some surface parking area. And Jim had mentioned some colleges that we always try to tap into whenever they want to look at something in Quincy. We've worked with a, a, a Boston College graduate team that looked at the Quincy Adams Station a number of years ago and they, they came up with a, a development out front on the surface lot. So that, again, if the T wants to develop it, they're not going to do it themselves. They'll, they'll bring in a private developer to do the development, which is news to our ears. And they almost then roll into a position like the city as a regulator, you know, reviewing the plans.
That makes sense. Okay, yeah, that's, I just, I know there's going to be ongoing interest. It's just that like if the majority of what we're seeing as interest to the city has to do with our, you know, four T stations, the commuter rail and the bus lines, I just, it's frustrating when we then have to depend on the MBTA, a separate body, not our own, to keep up and maintain those stations as well and that, you know, we need to make sure that they're staying on their timelines as well. But it's helpful to know, obviously, that you guys are on top of making sure that you're in contact with Secretary Pollock. It seems like she's the only one really that can then swoop in and get things done. So I'm happy you're in contact with her. But the last question I have for you actually had to do with the average year leases that you guys said that you were working out with Realtors and that it has been on average five to 10 year leases that you're seeing with Realtors with two five year options after that. And now it's one to three year leases that you guys are seeing. So are the one to three year leases in existing spaces or are these in some of the newer spaces that we're seeing, like the West Chastina Building?
No, tho- those spaces are basically, in, in a premium market, those five to 10 year leases are still the norm. The one to two year leases are someone's, so if they have an existing lease, I, I don't want to use the term they're stuck with it, but they are stuck with it. It's when people look up for lease, when these leases come up, what they're looking at is one to two year, if you will, I don't want to call them extensions. I think Sean Caneely said that they are temporary, you know, as, as, as you go. You know, there, he gave me a, a list of things that can occur. You know, they can give you, well, we'll give you a temporary one or two years if you're renewing. If you're coming in the door, you're not getting that kind of love. You're, you're, you're basically going to have to give them a longer term commitment. But again, if, if you're comfortable and you're ready to come in, you're going to pay market with maybe a little bit of a, a release on it. But as far as for those smaller businesses, a restaurant that says, you know, you know, what, what can we do? A lot of it is what the landlords are saying. We'll work off a percentage of what you make, what you're gross.
Yeah, the percentage rent. I mean, that's why I was just wondering about this because I feel like five to 10 years is very small, and especially if you have the two, five year options after that. I mean, it just, if it's the norm and that's what you're telling me, like maybe I've been out of the game too long, but I feel like that's very low. Especially if you're talking about any retailer who's coming in and then building out the actual space itself.
Well, on a much bigger scale.
It seems like it's a little low, but if that's, you know, what you're hearing, and this is what you're hearing from, directly from the landlords as well or from the Realtors.
That is what we're hearing. We, you know, I reached out to a number of them. And I reached out to Sean. Sean seems to be the most commercial Realtor that, you know, I can get really quick, accurate information from. He's more than happy to help. So I, I will tell you that, again, if you're a, if you're going to come in and make a commitment, your business plan is taking into consideration something as far as, you know, how long this pandemic is going to take to, to plan. Like I said, they started off thinking it was September, moved to January, and now they're talking June. None of that is a guarantee. But, you know, we monitor, literally, we speak to businesses every day, as you do. And again, many of you call us and ask us, you know, what do you hear, what's happening here and so forth. So you're part of our intelligence network, so to speak. You guys inform us often as to something that's happening in a particular neighborhood especially. And you want us to drill down, re-drill down, you know, it's what we do all the time. We're more than happy to. If you come up with a situation with a business or a piece of property that you want some information on, that's our job. We're more than happy to reach out to those folks and, and see if we can assist them or for that matter, get more information for you so that you can, you can know a little bit more about what's going on in the city.
And I, and I appreciate that. And obviously, like, I'm not in the business of, I don't want by any means, you know, government to tell landlords how long their lease terms need to be with Realtors, you know, we should not be in the business of doing that. But I'm just, you know, I would love to see at some point those leases turn into more, you know, anywhere from even 15 and 20 year leases. It's because I know, you know, the, the more we move forward with redeveloping the downtown area and then subsequently Wallaston and North Quincy as well, is we want retailers who are going to, you know, be invested here, right, and want to stay here. And, you know, five years goes by really quickly when you have a small business. And so we can look at, you know, at some point in time, if the market turns and we're seeing new retailers come in with longer year leases, I, I personally would just feel more comfortable knowing that because I then know they're invested, you know, they're, they're interested in staying here, they're committed to staying here longer than five years, you know, with an option after that. So, you know, if and when you start to see that shift, I'd be really curious to see when that is and, and then sort of what kind of retailers we're looking at who are, you know, opting into those longer leases. So, yeah, I just, I'd just be curious to stay up to date with you guys on that, but that's all I had. I really appreciate it. I know, like you said, Jim, I, I reach out to three of you quite a bit, quite a lot, and Melissa as well. And all of you are phenomenal. I'm fascinated with the work that you guys do. And I know that, you know, it's incredibly challenging right now for any of you to do the work that you have to do, that you're tasked with doing. So I appreciate the update and I appreciate what you guys are doing, day in and day out. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Nina. Next, we have Brad. Brad, you're up.
Thank you, um Chairwoman. Appreciate it. Um Jim and team, sincerely, I I really do. Um I like these comprehensive downloads. I feel it gives me an opportunity, not only as a city council, but just as a citizen to, you know, hear, digest, contemplate, and then putting on my city council cap, uh hopefully, you know, contribute to the conversation. Um that's one of the things I often love about government is um a public input, right? And um sharing kind of the flow with uh, you know, my other council colleagues, along with the mayor to um, you know, hopefully contribute to a substantive conversation that uh, you know, may lead to some sort of output that, you know, really benefits the uh the community as a whole. So I do, I appreciate that um that download. And as I'm sitting here kind of digesting quickly, you listening to, you know, both Council Yang and Debonna speak about like diversity in housing stock. Uh and also, you know, Rob Stevens, who has been uh great to work with over the years. As you can hear, my um youngest child is now awake and in the room um and asking. But uh sorry, listening to uh Rob Stevens. Brian, excuse me, one moment. This is one of the gifts of uh technology, right, at at uh children's bedtime. Listening to uh Mr. Stevens speaking about like, you know, outside entrepreneurs, right, or investors coming into the city, maybe coming to the city and saying, I forget exactly how he said it, but basically, how is it zoned? And what are you looking for? That would be the question to the city. And as I've often thought, you know, for the last year or so, um, you know, I do think w- we do have ball control with respect to determining the diversity in the housing stock. Um provided that, you know, we become willing to, you know, look at some of the uh the zoning enhancements that I know this body has spoken about, you know, over time. And uh I do think it's an opportunity to create that uh diversity in housing stock. And when I first introduced the legislation, that's what I thought, and I and I do think of that now. And I'm dealing with uh personally as a ward council, a real life conversation um up in my neck of the woods uh with uh with Penn Hill. So an applicant came in and purchased uh some land, and now they're uh building four single family homes, which uh my understanding is there is a uh, there's a fair amount of uh pent up interest for them. And uh the price point is uh, you know, it's it's there from what I understand. So again, as we think about economic development, I'll I'll get to that in a moment. Uh I just, I I would be remiss if I didn't kind of point out, you know, maybe the obvious to some, but um maybe not always to me, that we we do kind of control our uh manifest destiny with the way that uh we codify our zoning. And um as I'm sort of listening to this, I know Council McCarthy and I had, you know, worked on a project down and not down on the point. It was in Wood One, but Ward Two is right across the street. And I say to myself, like, what if just hypothetically, that was a residential area, right? That would have changed the dynamic of the whole conversation. But we also need to be mindful of the fact that uh, you know, the federal government has created these opportunity zones in our city, which make it extremely, uh excuse me, it is a souped up incentive for developers to come in. So, you know, just sort of a, I guess, friendly piece of feedback. Um, you know, maybe it is time to kind of look at uh certain areas of the city and where we can produce some of that uh, you know, single family indoor uh more affordable housing. Because I do think that's a huge part of the pie when we consider the city as the whole. You know, having opportunities for housing. Realistically speaking, you know, for people who are who are already there and or maybe wanna transition out of that, you know, condo type living into into single family. So the city does, you know, have the uh have the capacity to create that, which I think is uh, that's a good thing. Um, you know, also listening to Council Debonna, a- and I totally get it. Let me just take a step back. It is absolutely unprecedented times and so many levels for so many different things. So um I think we all probably have like our own, you know, wishlist. I wish this was here. I wish this was here. And plantar fasci, as you point out too, a lot of that, you know, it's driven and controlled by the market. Um, you know, one of the things that I was sort of thinking about, and again, I I got interrupted earlier, uh but I heard you guys kind of speak about Fox Rock. I don't know, like, if you gave an update on that. I apologize. I had to step out of the room. I know Council Mahoney had asked for that at some point in the near future. So maybe there wasn't any sort of update given there, but I know that they're a major stakeholder, land controller, probably better put in the downtown, um, you know, with respect to where the Ross Garage is. But, you know, as we think about what kind of businesses do we want to attract? Like, my recollection is, you know, the city does hold a prime piece of real estate, AKA the Messina Lot, right, in downtown, that I know was kind of positioned for um, you know, overflow parking in the in the event we were gonna build uh over on the Ross Garage. But, um, you know, maybe that's an opportunity to sort of pre-market that and see what else is maybe out there in the environment to uh generate some interest and um, you know, bring a business that we're looking to uh have in the city of Quincy that doesn't want to do anything but essentially own the piece of property, right? I mean, that that would be one of the uh tools in the toolbox, right, Jim?
Certainly. I mean, the the flexibility of uh, you know, city owned land uh lies largely with uh not just the uh the the administration, uh it's the council as well. Uh you guys are, you know, gonna weigh in on any kind of disposition of city land. Um there's there's a robust dialogue, I believe, going on. Uh and and we're we're kind of w- we are uh very fortunate as far as uh cities in the Commonwealth right now with the diversity of the housing uh that is being built in the city. Uh it was mentioned that, you know, folks are leaving condos. I know people that are looking for condos. Um and a lot of folks that are looking at condos are uh are looking for, you know, not as luxury condos as some that have been put out there. But um, uh, you know, and when you get the single family homes, I I mean, uh the single family homes that are going up, the four clusters of four here and going there. I mean, when they start off, you hear these ridiculous numbers, and then you find out they're asking even more than what those numbers are. Um it's 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 something that, you know, does need to be balanced by uh workforce housing and different sorts of affordable housing, which we're very fortunate to have.
Me, Jim, the Watson, hundred and forty units, almost a thousand applications. If that's not a real life case study, I don't know what is.
That's right. And as you know, that whole area uh is, again, we're doing some more work with uh with uh, you know, uh Neighbor Works down off of that uh Winter Street area. That that's all going. Um, as I mentioned to you, there was another piece of property that uh we'll hear more about at a later date. But uh I'm I'm not um, I I'm not uh disagreeing that uh it's always time to watch what we're doing. And uh and we can control with uh zoning and we can control with uh zoning a little more than site plan, you know, once you you own the site, you know, we're we're gonna help you plan it. Um and uh we're gonna hold you to a certain level of of uh completion. But um there's there there's there's a lot going on. And there's, I I see, you know, the, you know, the three families and above. Uh, you know, Jay sees a lot of the single family stuff. And uh to uh Council Debonna's point, there's a lot of folks that wanna add to their building, that add to their units. There are folks who are single family homes that wanna pivot into a two or three family home on the site. So there there's a lot of action, and it's, we we try to be as nimble as we can to 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 and we certainly listen to to what you folks have to say about that. So um, you know, we're we're working it and we'll continue to work it. And if there's, you know, suggestions made and legislation uh, you know, passed, we're gonna follow it. It's uh it's it's our job. And uh again, I uh I think you are uh very active in this entire uh this entire body has been uh very engaged. And uh and and I mean, ward counselors, at large counselors, uh terrific uh participation in uh neighborhood meetings and uh participation in planning board and zoning board meetings. Uh you're there, you're present, and uh I tip my hat to you because it helps us. And uh and it also helps the citizens of the city. But we're we're working. Uh portable housing is, a a lot of things are coming up and uh folks are looking at it um in 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 a uh in a very, very uh, you know, focused manner. I mean, you know, some of the things we've been able to accomplish and with your help. And uh, you know, you take a look at the seven units of of uh, you know, hearing impaired uh uh, you know, building that we did out. We we did that during the pandemic. We we got that uh agreement going. Uh there was the city involved. There was the Housing Authority that was involved. Uh obviously, there was uh Work Inc. and uh and Neighbor Works. A spectacular opportunity to to affect housing that is, you know, out of the norm. And uh, you know, we're getting all sorts of credit for the seven units that we're producing there. But we produced a lot of affordable housing and will continue to. And that is one of the good things that comes out of development. I know that there is inconvenience caused by more traffic and more people and all that. But uh also, it provides us with funding and more affordable units as we go forward. So um uh it's uh, a- and as I mentioned earlier, uh our our net income is rising. There is uh uh, you know, there are those that'll say that, you know, they feel they're being squeezed out or left behind. Um a- again, uh we try to be responsive to that. And uh and we do, you know, work as hard as we can to pro- to provide uh a as balanced housing as we can. We're very popular right now. And uh, you know, the dance card seems to be full still. And uh there has been absolutely no shortage in people coming forward to us. Some of these things you'll never see because they're terrible. And uh I give uh the staff here a great deal of uh, we push back often and uh sometimes very vigorously. And I also see that the boards are starting to get a little bit tighter. Boards are starting to to recognize, uh, you know, and and I just encourage you to, as as counselors, to uh to be heard and uh wait a minute, I I mean, I don't have to suggest that you're not being heard, but I and I certainly don't have to say that you're not participating. You are, and that that helps. And and I I salute you for it. So um.
Right. Yeah, and again, like, I'm, I I guess my, so I'm a very hands-on ward counselor. I have been since I've been in office, particularly with all these applications.
Called other things by developers, but I listen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you know what? I I do what's in the best right, best interest.
I know you do.
And um, you know, again, but as you think about, I'm not by any stretch of the matter a planner. I have zero credentials, zero training, and I'm a city councilor, so I know kind of like a generalist, say a little bit about everything. I'm not a housing production expert, any of that stuff, uh full disclosure. But as I think about like our great city, right, I would think it, we strive to wanna make it a place uh that you can live regardless of your season of life, whether you are, you know, newly into the workforce and you can afford one of these luxury condos and or renting, maybe transition into a single family home and ultimately, you know, give you options as you mature in life. And I feel like particularly with seniors, and I've often said this to you, um, cuz I hear it a lot. It's that that transition period from the single family home into, you know, where I want to kind of uh, you know, mature or live out my last section of my life, not to be morbid. But, you know, I I know that that is, that's an area that um, you know, again, provided how it was built, but that's an area where I think we could certainly um, you know, improve. And whether that would be like affordable housing money or anything. And I know this is an economic conversation, so I wanna get back to that. But I do believe uh we have the tools in our toolbox when we start to contemplate um zoning, right? So I just, I've said it before, I've said it now, and um, you know, as the adage goes, they're not making any more land. So um, you know, zoning is a compass. Uh and again, you know, utilizing the city property in the downtown to entice, I think, in some respect, the caliber, if you will, of businesses or business that um that we want. Like, I don't I don't know how much that comes into play, but I know we do uh, we do have land control as a city downtown. And one final thing too, as I heard you m- mentioned, um, you know, the local real estate company, my mind was going back as Rob was saying, cuz I know he has been here. Um it was very helpful to me when I first came on with respect to the uh the Streetworks gang. Um, you know, so that there are some, you know, opportunities for tenants downtown, right?
Yes.
And that, like, what about engaging somebody that has more of a national footprint? I remember that NRDC group. I remember they came in, they gave a good talk to the council. I remember they shared with us their portfolio of tenants that they placed in various places. I wanna feel feel like it was like New Jersey, Connecticut that way. But like an entity like that that could uh act as a resource or provide those introductory relationships to some of the uh the private business owners downtown uh who may, you know, want to engage with um some of their clients.
Yeah, uh you know, you remember the um uh the company Graffiti that was uh featured.
Who is it?
The company called Graffiti, and they were a, if you will, they like to stage your downtown. They like to tell you what your downtown ought to look like. We still talk to them. We still get information from them. Redgate engaged them. Uh Fox Rock has engaged them. Uh so there are big players that are in fact, uh, you know, uh talking. Uh but, you know, there's a uh, you know, there's an ongoing dialogue with uh with all the folks that uh control in and and will continue to do that. Um, you know, there's there there's a real thing here, though, that I I don't wanna make anybody miss. It's that uh, you know, the last six months have basically, you know, uh impacted um, you know, what these companies are gonna do. And we're waiting.
Absolutely.
Uh we're we're patiently waiting as everybody's waiting. So uh I ju- I just wanna say that um, you know, w- we haven't seen a lot of folks pulling away. And it's not like folks are saying, let's, let's, let's go. I believe honestly that nothing has changed fundamentally. I I think that on the surface, uh we're all, you know, we're all living this. It's almost like it's too close sometimes. But uh these companies have been together for a long time. Uh they uh they employ terrific talent. I spoke to some folks uh that uh we had spoken to in the past, uh the folks at Redgate. Uh, you know, they're involved in something. Uh they used us as a reference. Uh and and so when they use us, we use them. We ask them what's going on. I got a nice dissertation from Ralph Cox, who was one of the players there, as to what he sees going on in Boston and and so forth. And also, it's going on up and down the coast. Uh they're involved in something right now um in North Carolina. Um, we're paying attention. We're listening. We're asking. And uh, you know, there are national companies involved. Uh obviously, we're, you know, uh Bezuto is a company based out of uh, out of Maryland. Uh they're very present in this, in the Abbey construction up in North Quincy. And and we get to to pick their brains too. So we're we're evolving. Uh but I, like I say.
Yeah. No, I know you guys feel the lesson. I know you're more than involved uh on a daily basis. I just look at it again, it's an opportunity to come, get a comprehensive uh checkup as to what's going on and and hopefully um, you know, provided, I guess, some commentary that hopefully could be useful. But uh, you know, that's it. I mean, I stand here as a council, like, and I know all my colleagues do, like, everybody wants the best for the city. That's 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 why we're here. That's why we do.
Well, a- again, I and I I credit uh Chairwoman Mahoney. This is a good opportunity for us to give you that information and to give you a comprehensive program. And I uh I thank you for your, not just your patience, but your attention. Uh and I get to see your faces and I'm watching and you're paying attention. You're asking questions. Uh you're very engaged in this, and I thank you for that. Again, um uh on a more personal note, I I can't be happier that my staff, you you saw how much information was there. You didn't get it all. You got you got what we got it down to manage. Uh we could have gone on in 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 depth.
It would have been an all nighter.
It could have been an all nighter. And uh and and I I appreciate the uh, you know, the fact that you have a council meeting Monday. Many of you were involved in uh uh in a meeting last night. And and again, uh I And and again, uh I I just want to say that uh we're there every step of the way with you. And as you go forward, uh i- if you run into an issue, uh that's what we're here for. And and again, the the planning department uh uh really, really works across many, many uh disciplines and uh I am blessed with the terrific staff. Uh people want to work here. Uh people want to come and work for the planning department. It's a good thing. So uh a- again, I thank.
I agree. It's always been a high caliber service, Jim. Seriously, you know.
I I we we really.
I mean that.
Really feel good about what we're doing and uh, you know, the mayor hasn't shot me yet, so I appreciate that too.
All right. With that, I'm gonna turn it back to the chairwoman. Thanks, Jim, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Pastor Pearl. Um we're gonna turn this over to Mr. McCarthy. He has some questions. So Dave, you're up.
Thank you, uh Madam Chairwoman, and um to reiterate, uh Mr. Fatsy's uh, I want to commend you for having it tonight. Uh just this round robin at the beginning was a good blast of information uh for everyone. Having Maureen on, Sean, Rob, Mr. Scribby, uh Mr. Fatsy's, we we get a taste of of every component in planning and um Jim, I want to thank you for always having an open door uh for all of us to come up, to sit down and um sometimes ask uh smart questions and maybe sometimes bother you a lot with questions that uh might go round and round, but uh thank you. One of the things that I'm glad to see, um and we talk about the last six months, is that um we kept moving along. Everything kept moving along. Things did stumble a little bit as uh you know, in regards to um different projects getting off the ground because of COVID. But when you look around, you see that the Ross lot is in motion. I've been involved with a couple of conversations with Fox Rock, with Ward One uh projects over here off of Hancock Street. And they seem to be back engaged. I think they always were behind the scenes. And um I think a lot of us are waiting to um get the LDA uh pulled out to look at and and move on with um with LBC and uh that Hancock lot um, you know, really has has really come around well with the with with the fours in the patio and and uh the street, you know, and those restaurants. Um and uh it it seems to have plenty of space right now. But I think that LDA is uh uh a big item that will just keep everything flowing on that side as we prep for for the other side. And I and I think uh uh Rob Stevens did a great job bringing us all around the city. Uh you know, right away, we think of the downtown, what's going on with the downtown, but North Quincy and Wallaston. Uh it was great to hear uh the conversation about a lot of projects that we know about, but to hear it again um is a good thing and um everyone on here is is involved. I think um, you know, we used to say that downtown, you know, I think we're gonna turn the corner. Well, I think we're we're way past that now. I think we're uh we're in a good place. Um your folks have kept, you know, moving forward over the last six months, as I just said. And to Mr. DeBonner's um, Counselor DeBonner's point, um probably speaking for all the ward counselors, zoning and planning uh has been, after a little lull, right back in the game. Um there are more projects going on and a tremendous amount in rez A, as Counselor DeBonner asked in regards to additions and work that's going on. I think there's something um there every week in zoning and and I know we had a planning meeting last night that was pretty productive, so. Um no, just a big thank you, Jim. I I think a lot of the questions, I'm not gonna keep everybody and and repeat things, but I think a lot of the the questions cover the subjects that are out there. Uh you know, in the back of our minds and back of the residents' minds and 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 in in the middle of your everyday work that uh that were answered. Uh just a big thanks to your group, the administration, and and also to uh the Galvins and Peter O'Connell and and the other uh developers that uh, you know, Quincy invested. And um, you know, uh we're all gonna get there and I I think uh it's just great. Most of the positive vibes I get for folks that have either lived in Quincy and moved out are how impressed they are with Quincy. How impressed they are with the Hancock Common. How impressed they are with what the downtown is now that we've had uh some of the structures go up. And um just the overall condition of the city. Real positive, Jim, so great presentation tonight. And um just in a side note to Mr. Scribby, um you guys did a tremendous job when we got into that grant program for the small businesses uh and went through that um procedure to get them money to keep them going. I know that I had a a very extensive Ward One list that Jimmy turned around real quick. Uh he probably had thirty or forty businesses on there and was probably able to take care of uh almost the entire list. Went through, explained why uh some were getting this and some were getting that, but uh tremendous job in that program. Uh and I'm always amazed how quick you can turn it around and how organized it is, so. Thanks for the whole planning and thank you to Mr. Scribby for making Ward One businesses happy and they didn't yell at me too much. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coffey, but it was a team effort and um we were happy that you reached out and had interest. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
I I think this is also an opportunity for a lot of you to kind of understand the role that Maureen and Jim play in the city. Uh you know, we have two business development planners. Uh they're engaged every day. Uh they they they're out on the street uh more than you'd ever know. Uh they do site visits with us. They uh they chase large corporations. They go out to corporate headquarters all over the 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 Commonwealth to try to get people to come our way. So uh I I I really, again, I think this was a great opportunity for us to just give you a comprehensive rundown of what we're what we're trying to do with the mission, so thank you.
No, thank you. I'm all set, uh Chairwoman.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy, and um Counselor Phelan has some questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh through you, I I guess I'll s- send this to the planning director. Um a question I had was um we went through these programs, helped small businesses and all that, and that was all great at the time. Some of these restaurants have done better because they've been able to open up and go outside. But I'm looking at another month or two and several of the the outside auctions aren't going to be there anymore. And is there anything in the pipeline, either on the state or the federal level, to help small businesses? Because unfortunately, I think we all thought we'd be out of this by Christmas, but that's not, it doesn't, that doesn't appear to happen. So I guess uh some of the small businesses I've talked, uh that's kind of that uh, you know, is this gonna, is there gonna be anything else coming from the state or the federal government? Or does the city have a ability to provide anything? Because I see a lot of the things that happened last March will probably be happening as we get into winter. You can't sell as much outside. They're already hit with a much lower, you know, business has gone way down from what it was. Um I didn't know, and we've got, made a great start at bringing some of these businesses back and in. And I would hate to see them go out before before we're we're done with this uh COVID mess.
Well, whenever I'm looking for federal money, there's a guy named Sean Glennon that uh is uh is the guy I turn to. And I'm putting you on the spot, Sean, but uh I know that we've gotten a little bit of information out there, Sean. I don't know if your microphone, you have to, you 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 took care of it yourself and uh so um we had gotten a little bit of information um about a month ago, but it's been kind of quiet. Uh is there, what what are you hearing, Sean?
In terms of funding, we will have a third round of of CDBG COVID money coming in from from HUD, which is yet to be uh allocated. But um I think to the the counselor's point, if there is going to be an option to use that COVID money for another round of funding, I mean, that remains to be seen. But I think Counselor Phelan might have been asking more about um resources for the businesses heading into the winter, which there there may be some options to use CDBG funding to pay for some of the outdoor uh heating units and things like that. HUD, see, the problem with the federal government, I think, as most of you probably know, is that it takes time. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time in these situations and and by the time we get the answer, sometimes it's it's too late. Um you know, for the folks that that need the help, which is why it was, you know, pretty amazing that we're able to get that first round out in about five weeks. Um in fact, we actually got those checks out on June fifth, which was before the grant agreement with HUD was was even executed. Uh fortunately, under that program, they allowed us to incur pre-award costs. So we actually spent the money before we had had it, but we did it within the confines of the program. Um in this case, I think I maybe I'd ask Maureen to chime in in terms of what we might be able to do. If there are any plans for businesses heading into the to the winter in terms of local resources, but as far as the HUD funds go, that that question is still with HUD, Counselor, in terms of if we can use those funds to assist them with maybe equipment or sort of outdoor um heating elements.
Maureen.
Sorry about that. I couldn't find my. Um no, I mean, we are hearing about um, you know, trying to get business owners are trying to be creative and and the heating, heating lamps obviously are one way. Um some are talking about, in other communities, they're talking about, you know, bringing your own blanket to sit outside. Um creating barriers where there's no breeze, less cool. Um yeah, it's a challenge and I'm not seeing any funding at this point on the federal level. But one of the programs that the state has been implementing is a shop local um program, you know, to get people out of the house and into the stores. And I know that it helps the restaurants and it also helps the retailers. Um and that's a program that's running until the end of December. So um just trying to put the light on some of these businesses and and bring people in um is is kind of a program with the state. But funding, um I I don't see anything. I mean, Jim Scribby talked about the PPP and the EIDL. Those funds are still out there and, you know, if they're, they want to use it for purchasing, um you know, outdoor materials, I'm sure they're able to do that. Um but right now, we're just kind of waiting and hearing uh as things come about.
No, a lot of small businesses have got real creative. You know, and a lot of the ones around Quincy that I see in Wallaston, in different areas where I am every day. Uh they've got real creative and uh I just think that we we have started to revitalize some of these areas. And this is obviously not a, not gonna happen forever what we're going through right now. And I would like to see, and they're gonna be the ones that are gonna help stimulate the economies and uh and move these these areas. So I think um that you keep your ear to the ground and find out if there's anything coming from state or federal. I know some of them with the federal, I bet you will have it. Probably vote for it on November fourth after the election. Uh yeah, you you people did a great job the last round and I thank you for all the work you did on that, but uh but unfortunately, I think we're gonna be coming through this again. And uh I think that anything we can do to help keep the small businesses going, keep these areas like not just Quincy Square but Wallaston and North Quincy alive and functioning uh I think is a great service, not only for the businesses, but the people who live in those areas. Um briefly on 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 housing units. I'm out every night of the week, so I see any slowdown in housing uh or anything like that at all. I I don't think I missed a zoning or planning board in usually two or three hours, so uh I'm not seeing any slowing down. But a question I have for Jim, I I know you used to keep a running stat, I remember when I was a department, that you showed it to me a couple of times. On the amount of housing units that have been brought online, let's say in the last five years, would you have a rough number on how many housing units have been brought in, because I think it's.
I I I think I'd go and say forty-six hundred.
It's an immense number.
It is is an immense number in this Commonwealth and and again, uh you know, we get every every ribbon at the fair, you know, when we we show up and they say, oh, you guys, how you doing? It's just a uh, I I say it's because we have such a strong city council. Uh but uh beyond what I say, and we're, stop laughing, Cole. Uh what I what I really say is uh we are, uh you know, I I really say this. When Rob is talking about the schools, police and fire, twenty-seven miles of coastline. You've got the red line. We are in the sweet spot. And um it's been very attractive to folks that want to live here. When you talk to somebody uh that has just moved in and we're walking around the square all day and, you know, we do things, we stop in and um I was in Peter's building, Peter O'Connell's building, and uh some people were working in the uh in in the the common space downstairs and uh they overheard myself speaking to uh Arthur Casey, who is Peter's uh financial guy. And they heard what we were talking and they, one of them came over and just said, are you guys with the city? And I said, yeah, we're with the city. They just said, well, we want to tell you, we looked at a lot of other places to live. And there were people that uh came up from GE and they had originally lived in Dorchester and uh and then they moved to Quincy and, you know, just a couple that uh, you know, regular-looking people, just, you know, uh just just telling us how impressed they were. And I love hearing it because I got Arthur sitting there next to us, but it it's it's, we have a very attractive product. And we have a uh, we have government that works with the developers. We have government that understands what the uh citizens are asking for and uh and we're responding. And and you know, it sounds corny, but it's it's the truth. It's it's a, we're in a very, very good place to be. Forty-six hundred units and I can tell you that we're looking at another thousand easy. Um and uh, you know, some of these are, you know, forty at a time, you know. There aren't a whole lot of guys gonna come in right now and build five hundred units of housing in the city of Quincy. Uh but it's amazing how quickly they are being uh occupied. And uh, you know, we're hearing good things down uh at the end of uh down below the Granite Links with the the Q with the quarry uh project up there. They're they're very happy with their initial uh activity. So we'll we'll keep watching and we'll keep working, but uh I I appreciate that. Uh before I let y'all go, though, I want to say something about Maureen. So when the council, uh when when the Chamber of Commerce was looking to uh do something with our our winter program down there, which is, you know, an annual event where we have a great opportunity for small business to come in and sell their wares and we've done it many times and um crazily, it what what do you think has happened? Well, everybody that has a tent uh has rented it, except for the Sheriff's Department. They seem to have a tent and uh when we went looking, Maureen picked up the phone and uh spoke to uh the Sheriff's Department and was able to secure a tent for that uh for that uh that event. That's the time and grade, that's the, that's the understanding of government that uh, you know, uniquely she brought to the process. And uh Tim Cahill and company have a tent uh that they're gonna be able to use for the uh for the winter market. These are things that um, you know, I'm darn proud of and uh every chance I get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw you know, a hug to some of the people that are are working so hard to get this going. And again, we won't stop. Uh that's the very important part of what the mayor's message has been. We're not gonna stop. We're gonna keep going and we're gonna keep working hard and uh use every resource we can. And uh and and I appreciate, you know, I can't tell you, I appreciate all the support. You guys call us. Uh our employment is pretty steady right now. We look pretty good. It doesn't look like we're uh we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, run out of work in a hurry. But uh I just want to, again, thank you for uh for your comments, because it's been very positive tonight.
I think we have a couple of more people who want to ask you a few more questions, so.
Bring him.
Are you up, Chuck?
Yep, I am.
Okay, so um Bill Harris, uh Counselor Harris, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you.
And you're almost done. You're almost done, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman. Jim, by the way, uh thank you, Chairwoman, and and Jim is never done. It seems like it goes on and on and on. But I'm only falling, great job that your uh department has done and um I I appreciate, I just appreciate what everybody did putting this together this evening. Um I do uh, I hate mentioning Mr. McCarthy, but I'll mention Mr. McCarthy. I never do. Um Mr. McCarthy uh referenced rez A and the importance of protecting rez A. That's something that um, again, on 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 Monday night, I'm looking forward to Monday night's meeting. Um ordinance uh meeting where we're gonna talk about uh the Airbnbs and uh and how we're going to. We have to defend, uh you know, it's 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 great to have forty-six hundred units come in, but unless we protect what we already have. And and as you mentioned, Mr. uh Jim, um you know, uh me and my wife are one of those people who came here from Dorchester thirty years ago and we wouldn't think about leaving, leaving Quincy. from Dorchester thirty years ago, and we wouldn't think about leaving leaving Quincy for a moment because of what it's turned into, what I've seen develop working in the downtown over the, it's going on two years. I can't believe it that I'll be down and working in the downtown area. And having seen what has taken place and how it has grown and how it has developed. And in in such a way where in Boston, you'd be, you wouldn't be able to move traffic wise. Whereas in in Quincy, you know, everything was, it's it's just, it's just amazing that the job that the folks did, you folks did, and and the developers did. So with that, I just wanted to thank everybody and and everybody be safe and have a good night. Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Counselor.
All right, Jim, so I'm going to wrap it up because I do have a couple of questions. And I think you did touch upon some of these. And I know that you did say, when we talk about the MBTA, and I think it was Rob Stevens you were mentioning, when the MBTA comes in and they do a development, they actually hire out the developer and they kind of manage the project. Is that correct?
Rob?
Yeah. So and one of the things that the MBTA does that I'm looking for in the downtown is, and I think you had said that the city doesn't really oversee these things. But as the master developer, I guess I was expecting a little bit more of direction as to what we were hoping to see in those down, those those retail units. But the MBTA, when they hire out the developer who's going to do that, if it's going to be mixed units, they're going to be expecting that those lower levels are going to be filled. And that's what happens when they're doing those developments. And I do realize you're saying like, the people who own the buildings are the ones that have to rent out those buildings. But we have a lot of open space still in the downtown and it is concerning. So I just, I'm just questioning one thing. And you've had a great presentation. It's a lot of information and there are bits and pieces from everywhere. But one of the things I don't see, and I don't see it on the website, I don't see it, if I was a business that was interested in relocating to Quincy, there's no real master branding campaign for what we have and how to get in touch with people or where you can go. Where many other cities and communities took advantage of Amazon potentially coming to different parts of the state. And they took that advantage to actually put together kind of a master development plan for what open space they have, what's the industrial space? And then how much square footage and work collectively and collaboratively with those open spaces. And what I'm wondering is, we we do have in the downtown, we we fund several different through several different agencies that we have on retainer. But so but we don't have any, we just have piecemeal, like flyers or, you know, restaurants are over here. So what I'm looking for is, is there something like that that you that you're working on or that we can anticipate that will come? Because while we're having the downtown, the downtime with COVID, which I do think we have, I think it's an opportunity because you have a lot of information you presented to us, but there's an opportunity while we're having this downtime to kind of pull it all together and kind of have one one kind of global piece to be able to market for the city. Because we do have good schools and we do have a great food station and we do have the coastal. But what we don't have is we don't have a marketing tool for those businesses to come to to be able to. And and that's my first question. So I'm just curious, you know, like using the MBTA, because we did, we did bring that up. And how they go about doing their development and how we're going about doing the master plan for downtown Quincy? Because the expectation is that there is going to be shops for everybody to use, not just the people who live in downtown, but to draw other people up, then to the restaurants. And the restaurants need that, too. So I was just curious to know what that plan is.
Well, I I would, well, first of all, the Amazon did speak to the city.
Yep.
And we spoke to them on on two occasions. They were very interested in the, excuse me, the
I don't mean to interrupt. It's not about Amazon speaking to Quincy or that we didn't have the opportunity for Amazon. It's other communities took the opportunity to market their communities and in knowing that and pitch and basically pitched to Amazon, but knowing that the effort of the pitch may not necessarily bring that business, Amazon, to their community. Or maybe they don't even want it to come to their community. But taking that opportunity to really put a value branded guide together for potentially pitching other businesses. So it's it's less about not having Amazon come here and more about the opportunity to be able to really market ourselves to the right businesses to come to Quincy.
I I would argue we market ourselves insanely well. And and I mean that. And I think that if you if you know how many people do reach out to us, maybe you wouldn't feel that way. And maybe I have to do a better job of explaining to you how many contacts we make. It is a limited amount of control we have. If we, you know, in the LDA business, we're pretty, you know what we own, you know what we control. We have no shortage of suitors, as well you know. When it comes to asking somebody, some of the communities you may be speaking to, I'd love to compare what they've got going. And because the master plan, planning, that's what we are, right? We do all sorts of plans. We do open space plans. We do climate, excuse me, climate resiliency plans. Do housing production plans. We do all of those things. When you're marketing a city and you're marketing your brand, you hope to have as much activity as we have. We are, and you never can say we've got enough. But we have so many people reaching out to us, it's it's extraordinary.
I I know that, Jim, but I guess what we're not seeing is, we're seeing people reach out to us, but we're still seeing many open space buildings and things not happening. There's a lot of empty storefronts still. And I and in prior to COVID, we had those empty storefronts. So and I appreciate people are reaching out to you, but I'm also suggesting that it's it's just, and I know you have, you just presented yourself tonight. You you have had a great presentation. You have assets that work with you. You have a lot of pieces. But the story is being told in separate, different places and not not coherently told in one particular place.
I would say, I would say that I believe it is coherently. And maybe if there's some time that you'd like to, you know, have a conversation offline, we could talk about what you feel would be more coherent and I'd be more than that.
I think if I was to be researching myself coming to the city of Quincy and I looked at the website, it doesn't really have, I mean, I can pick up the phone and call and I can talk. But sometimes people, when they're looking for those spaces, are looking to be able to see that footprint and see the collaborative effort. So that's that's one question. So another question I have with the downtown, when I look at places like the Seaport or Westwood or South of Washington or South Boston or any of the other areas that have done major developments, with all of the residential that we have down there, what you're typically suggesting is that they're there's not, they're they're potentially not going to have need for cars. It's mostly walking because the MBTA, you really want to create that walking footprint. But what we're not seeing is, and even in some of those footprints would be maybe collaboratively talking to maybe a CVS or a we talked about, Mel DeBona talked about Whole Foods or Trader Joe's. We also have Roach Brothers in the city of Quincy, and they have a smaller unit called Brothers that particularly go into those particular areas of downtowns because they're looking for that walking neighborhood type thing. So I guess the reason why I'm asking that is we're not seeing that kind of pull or draw yet. And that's typically the first thing that goes in is like people that live in those communities try, they they get, Star Market's not that far, but they're looking for that stuff to be right near them. So I'm just curious about that.
I I I hope to, hope to be able to give you good news down the road, that there are some small unit type markets that are engaged with actual location.
I'm I'm hoping too, because I think, you know, what we've done and what's happening is is it's primed for that to happen, but we're, it's 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 the last leg of it. And I think when we start to see that, I think people will take a breath of sigh of relief. Because what we have or what we've seen go downtown is like Gentle Dental or, I mean, we have had some new businesses that have come in. But but, you know, the the real promise of the downtown and the success of it was the retail, I mean, the the residents would bring the retail. And we have the restaurants. And I'm concerned, as we all are, as everybody has spoke about the the sensitivity as we're going forward with COVID. I mean, none of us thought we would, you know, I don't think any of us collectively that are here tonight or anybody else would have ever thought we would be talking about December and now talking about June. I mean, it's, to me, that's a horrific way to have to manage. And I do appreciate what the city has done in reaction to that. Because I think it's important that we try to help them navigate through what's happening now. But at the same time, we have to also be nimble enough, as you said, to be able to forward think as to how we're going to be able to manage going forward. Now, the MBTA, they don't have the traffic that they had before either, so the MBTA will have those problems too. But one of the reasons why they're doing the developments over the MBTA is to help pay for the maintenance of their of their structures. So they're getting the real estate business in hopes that it will help navigate some of the the pricey problems that they have as well. I guess it's not meant to be a criticism, Jim. Really, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how we're marketing the city. Because I know that, you know, there have been businesses that were with us here in the city of Quincy, much to what Council Lang was suggesting is we don't want them to leave. We want, if somebody's, if a location is no longer working for a certain business, we want to make sure we're reaching out to those businesses, letting them know that there's another location in another part of our city that might fit them better. Because that's, you know, that is how the economics work for the city. We want to make sure we're maintaining the businesses that we do have and keeping them in our, keeping them in our city and not losing them to other communities. And then also attracting the businesses to come to us. So I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll see some of that development happening. I realize that we're in the middle of COVID. And, you know, my wish was not when I asked for this that I thought you'd be, you know, we would be reviewing this back in March or beginning of April and COVID would never happen. But it has, and we have to learn to adjust to it. But like I said, I think when we go to the website currently, it's it's hard to find the economic development section of the website to be able to see that. And that's, again, it's just, it's a structural thing within the website that we need to work on. And I think it would help, you know, lift the people that are looking for themselves to come. I know myself, when I moved from downtown Boston to downtown Quincy, it wasn't an easy transition. It was hard to to transition into Quincy. It wasn't, but that was a long time ago, Jim. So so I know that, and you weren't working, you weren't working in the planning department.
Yeah, that was the problem there, yeah.
So, you know.
I I I absolutely constructive criticism is always is always helpful. You, we do know that we are getting a target in the North Quincy train station, also a CVS in the North Quincy train station and a Starbucks. That is what is happening. We are, we have spoken to a number of smaller, if you will, niche markets that are, you know, Milton Market type places that are just in the city. So we're speaking to them. Again, if we can do a better job with our website, my entire staff just heard you say it, we'll all take a look at it and we'll do our best to make it a little bit more robust.
Yeah, I I again, I appreciate that North Quincy is getting the target, the mini target and the CVS and 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 other amenities. But there, you're not, you're not the master developer of North Quincy. The city is the master developer of the downtown. So what I'm looking for is, you know, what is that same relationship that we're having with the open spaces that we have in the downtown? So that we can make sure that we're balancing that. It's great to see it happening. You know, the business is coming into North Quincy. It's great to see things happening. I'll use another another piece, and I think this was something that was useful. I think it might have been Graffiti, is it Graffiti or Graffiti, the company that you used at North Quincy in in Wallaston Station? I mean, Wallaston Center, when you had the the the, I think it was at at Central Middle School. We all came out, we stuck stickers on the walls and stuff. That was that company, right?
That was that was BSC. Oh, I'm sorry.
It was BSC, okay. So so we did organize with them to actually help kind of envision what what and we did the same thing, I believe we did the same thing, but it probably was with Streetworks. I don't remember doing it post that. But we did something similar with downtown. So the vision of what we're hoping for, what residents are anticipating things are going to be, and the execution is the thing that's missing. So and it's 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 only missing, it was missing prior prior to COVID. But now because of COVID, I see it as an opportunity for all of these things to pull together and hopefully be able to really, you know, bring the things that we're hoping for, for for downtown Quincy and Wallaston eventually. Because we do have these these meetings where we bring people out and we envision what we can have. And then we wait, this is the, this is, this is, this is meant to be constructive criticism. It might feel like you're, I'm saying you're not doing your job. But quite honestly, it's harder to do than people think. But at the same time, the downtown development has been happening for a long time. And people are looking for the fruits of the labor that's been that's been promised. And the people who've moved into downtown, they are, they are your your common market that that you're you're threatened to be able to bring those restaurants can only survive also with with the other stores and other things that people can go to. Because there's only so many times you can go to a restaurant, but you're more likely to go to a restaurant if you have to go downtown to go to something else. You're probably going to pop into that restaurant. I know that you mentioned that Whole Foods prefers to own the buildings, but like in Newbury Street, they don't own the Newbury Street building. They typically take on twenty five year leases in downtown or more congested areas. So they are in different places. So smaller, smaller units do happen. But, you know, Trader Joe's does prefer to own their buildings. I know they do own their building in the Seaport area. But again, it's just more of a, you know, what is the, what is the, what is the demographic calling for? And how are we targeting those kind of businesses to bring to the downtown? And I'm being specific about the downtown because that is where we as a city are the master developer. We're not the master developer in North Quincy, so.
Well, again, Graffiti is engaged in downtown. So you do know, they are engaged, Foxrock has hired them. They have spoken with us on more than one occasion. The individual businesses, the individual spaces in downtown, the retail spaces, we have a very solid inventory of what it is, what's there. You know, I, again, I I will tell you that Quincy Center is not is not a stranger to folks that are reaching out and looking at retail development. Again, as as we've always heard, get the people there, then the retail follows. The people are starting to move in because the buildings are completed. We will see more activity. It's in the best interest of the owners of those buildings to fill them. We work with every single one of them. We've spoken to every single one of them. They know we're here. And again, they are reached directly by by potential tenants. And we'll continue to work that. And I, your your points are made and we absolutely will consider them. And hopefully, it can can get to a point where you feel more comfortable with the effort that's being made.
Yeah, again, it's not meant to be that you're not making an effort, I think.
No, I know.
The idea though, too, the idea to the 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 idea that, you know, you know, it's it's interesting to me that we built without the commitment to the to the, and that was a, that was a personal preference for the developers who developed in downtown. But typically it developed, like North Quincy developed, but they developed after they had the commitment with the facilities that were they were building around. So the buildup was specific to the leases that they were going into. It's much harder once a building is built to retrofit the business. It doesn't mean it's impossible, but it it definitely prevents, it limits you as to who you can bring in. But I do really appreciate, it was a very, it was, it was a very in-depth presentation. And I realize the challenge that the city and the businesses are in, the city of Quincy are under with COVID. I mean, it is, we're all in that same situation. Quincy has a unique opportunity too, because a lot of us are working from home, so we have actually more people here. So knowing that the grocery stores are an important unit, it's it behooves you to let some of those other smaller grocery stores, Milton Marketplaces and those places, to know that that's something that's interested for for people to come. I know that, I think it was Council Crowe who asked about the presentation from Foxrock. That was going to be underneath the the oversight from Brad, from Mel DeBona to be presenting tonight. But Foxrock could not commit to coming this evening, and I'm hoping they'll come very soon. Because it's important that we hear from them too, in regards to the downtown, as we move on to any other LDAs as they're coming forward. So I don't know if anybody else has any other questions. I'm going to look around. I don't see anybody. So I'm going to, if if it's okay, I'm going to close this meeting. I want to thank you all, though, for coming out in your presentations. And I appreciate it. So I make a motion to adjourn, and I don't know what time it is. It's eight forty nine. And I look forward to continuing our conversations in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. And again, I just want to tell you, we're all working together. And any input, any thoughts that you have, any questions that pop into your head after the fact, feel free to send them to us. We'd like to address them. And I will be sending out kind of the stats, the notes that we used tonight. And I'll give you an opportunity to see Eric's complete analysis. Rob, I'm going to tell him that you you asked the way of reading. But thank you very much again. Have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.